Good evening. I'd like to call the order. The March 15th Planning Commission meeting, if we could have a roll call. I'm sorry, I'm going to take a step back. We're going to do a pledge of allegiance, please, if everyone could stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, if we could have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fondenvenardi?
Here.
Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Landris?
Here.
Vice Chair Raskin?
Here.
Commissioner Tulcan?
Yes, here.
Chairperson Reese?
Here. If we could move to the Planning Directors' report, please?
Good evening, Commissioner. Coming up at your, well, your next meeting, April 5th, is being canceled. Following that, April 12th will be a special meeting. On that agenda, we have a conditional use permit for 1901 Wilshire Boulevard. It's a former billiard parlor where there's a proposal for a medical office use. Also, that night, an ordinance clarifying permit requirements for wireless facilities. And then on April 19th, we have a, I think it's a conditional use permit as well for 1727 Ocean Park Boulevard, and that's an expansion of an existing early childhood facility. City Council action, so last Saturday, the council held their workshop retreat. At that meeting, they talked about overview of the upcoming budget process, also council priority setting. So, they expanded the number of priorities from three to five. So, the existing priorities were addressing homelessness, clean and safe Santa Monica, and cultivating economic recovery, and expand community and cultural amenities. To those three priorities, the council added racial equity and social diversity, and also added sustainable and connected community. So, those will be the five priorities going forward to guide, you know, the budget discussion and other city actions. At the same meeting on Saturday, they also talked about an organizational realignment to take what is currently the Community Services Department and divide it into two new departments. One will be Housing and Human Services, and then the other one will be Recreation and Cultural Department. So, the council supported both the reorganization and the priorities seven zero. So, we will now move forward again with the budget preparation for the biennial budget and incorporate those recommendations. Then last night, March 14th, the council approved the outdoor spaces, parking lots, places where restaurants have expanded because of COVID, also other uses such as gyms and some retail outlets. But this makes that ordinance permanent and allows those uses to remain, and then will also allow new uses, although the new uses will be subject to different standards, but the existing uses can keep the areas that they had even though they exceed what's permitted in the guidelines going forward. And the commission reviewed this a month or two ago, so you're up to speed on that. And then also, last night, adopted an emergency IZO for clarification of permit requirements for wireless facilities. Upcoming at council next Tuesday, March 21st, will be the housing element adoption, actually adoption of the implementation. So, of course, they've adopted the housing element, but this is adopting all of the changes to the zoning ordinance, the LOSE, the Bergamot Area Plan, DCP, to incorporate what's contained in the housing element. And then on April 25th, will be an adoption of a resolution declaring surplus properties. The two properties that we're talking about there are the former fire station number one on Seventh Street, and then the city cable TV building on 19th Street between Colorado and Olympic. So, those two properties would be declared surplus. And then also that night, adoption of gender-neutral restroom ordinance. And then May 23rd will be the kickoff of the budget study sessions. I think the 24th is also reserved if needed. And then based on those discussions, staff will come back in June for the final adoption. I also wanted to give you some updates on our economic recovery efforts and some pretty exciting things happening over the last few weeks. So, if you didn't see it, there's an article in Vogue magazine about the Georgian Hotel. And if you get a chance, then we could actually send you a link to that. But it's pretty exciting. Declares with the return of the Georgian, Santa Monica is getting its groove back. So, that's exciting. And then it actually goes into a lot of detail about the, you know, the renovation. It's, if you haven't seen it, it's really beautiful. You know, you guys talked about the restaurant a few weeks ago. So, that's very positive. Also, the, there was a news release yesterday that the Lowe's, which as you know is closed going into renovation, that will reopen as a Regent Hotel. So, they are currently in plan check. They're not doing anything that will trigger a planning commission or council review, but they're doing things like redoing the food and beverage, expanding the spa and gym areas, combining some existing rooms to create suites, and they hope to open by the end of '23. So, it's, they're doing a lot of work, but hoping to get it done in time to open soon. And then also some recent news releases related to Santa Monica Place. So, a month or so ago, they announced that the former ArcLight space has been leased to a digital museum. It's called Arte, A-R-T-E. They're out of South Korea, so they have a location now in South Korea. This will be their first U.S. location. The Mace Rich expects that it will draw, you know, a million people a year to Santa Monica Place, so pretty exciting. And then just within the last few days, they also announced that Dintai Fung, which is a Taiwanese dumpling restaurant, they are taking over the majority of the former food court space on the third level and the outdoor dining space that is adjacent to that area. So, with those two announcements, and then some others coming up that they haven't announced quite yet, but they're, they're really making a big investment in the mall and hoping to turn things around there. So, a lot of really positive economic development things happening. I know when you kind of look around right now, it doesn't seem like there's a lot happening, but, you know, knowing of the things that are coming, it's pretty exciting. Last thing I want to mention is on the housing front, so a week or so ago, there was a groundbreaking for 7-Eleven Colorado. So, that's the first of eight properties that Tishman Spire purchased from IMS a couple of years ago. They're building those out in two phases. The first phase will be 7-Eleven Colorado, 1650 Lincoln, which is the property next to Mel's, the property on 1400 block of Lincoln where it's currently a parking lot, really nice parking lot with big palm trees, and then also 501 Broadway. So, that's the first phase, and then the second phase will start within a couple of years. There was an article in the Daily Press yesterday that said that 501 Broadway was under construction. It is not. They don't have building permits. In fact, they just started their process, so they're jumping the gun there a little bit. But, but bottom line, again, a lot of stuff happening. And then, of course, the Vons project is under construction. If you've been by there, the store is like half, half gone, but related is moving fast on that project, and everything's moving. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We do have a few, a few questions. I saw, I saw Leslie first, then Sean, and then Nina.
I've heard rumors about reuse of Bloomingdale's. Is that all sort of going on, and we won't know what it is until it actually is disclosed?
Yes. So, there's two separate tenants contemplated there. So, one would be a ground floor use. I think they're pretty close to signing that deal. And then I think the, the second floor use, which would be separate from the ground floor, is, is also in the works, but a little bit further out.
I assume that neither is housing?
No.
That's too bad. The other question I have is, I've been hearing rumors and people involved in and out of, there's, there are RFQs and/or RFPs out on the street about surplus properties, city properties. And is there anywhere I can go to find what that's all about? Is there a council report that explains it, or what?
They're not quite out yet. We can, we will definitely let the commission know when they are released. So, I think what you're talking about are the Wilshire properties.
I'm not sure what I'm talking about. I just heard that there are properties out there.
So, the housing element contains, you know, there, there's the five separate properties that will be set aside for affordable housing. The housing element also says that we need to release an RFP. I think it's once a year. And so, the, the first one out of the gate will be the three Wilshire properties, which are parking lots behind existing commercial spaces. The RFP, I think it's supposed to be out within the next four weeks or so. And as soon as that's available, we'll let you know.
But I, so fourth and Arizona would be maybe in the second round in two years, or do we know?
We don't know exactly what the order is going to be.
Okay. And finally, my endless questioning about the letter to HCD. Can you give me an?
Yeah, question.
You did? I'll bet you, yeah. Well, you're going to be hearing it a lot. Would you like to respond?
Staff is still in the preparation phase. We do anticipate submitting it to HCD by the end of next week.
Are you basing your letter on the conversation you had with them a few weeks ago?
With?
I can't remember when it exactly was. It was a few weeks ago with the mayor and the staff and HCD?
We will be basing the letter in response to council direction at the, at the last discussion of the, of the housing element implementation. And we're posing the question in the way that council has provided direction to us, and we will be including the Planning Commission's letter as well as access to the correspondence that was provided to the council, so that that accompanies the correspondence from city staff.
Cool.
We also, you know, HCD is typically not a, read, read the letter. The letter is an opener for discussion, and if additional information is requested, we will engage, you know, with, with HCD.
I'm having a hard time hearing you. I don't know if it's me or you.
HCD, we're providing a, a letter to them in response to council's direction to us. We will be including Planning Commission's letter as well as provide access links to the correspondence that was provided to the council. So, HCD has the whole of the record that council considered when they asked us to send the correspondence to HCD. We anticipate they may have some questions, and so we will just take it step by step.
I mean, normally, HCD will be very interested in public response to the issue. So, I'm glad to hear. You're sending the 700 letters or whatever it was to the state?
They would probably prefer that we send the link to the correspondence online. We won't, we won't send them a sack of paper.
Really big box, I know.
But we will make sure that that's available. That was part of the discussion, so we will provide that.
I'm glad to hear that. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Landers?
Thank you. I just, so, just for clarificate, a couple of clarifying questions. On the zoning work that council is doing on March 21st, I see that all of it is resolutions and ordinances except for the emergency IZO extension. And I just wanted to clarify, that extension is totally consistent with where we're going with permanent zoning, right? So, it's, it's just to solve the problem that it's expiring before the new stuff takes effect?
Yes. There are no changes to the IZO. It is just to cover the gap because we got a little behind the anticipated schedule. So, it's, it's scheduled to expire at the end of March, and we need it to, and the second reading won't occur until April 11th if council passes the first reading on March 21st. So, the permanent changes wouldn't be effective until mid-May.
Right.
So, we just need to, that's what the IZO extension does, is it covers that gap.
But it's just gap. There's no change, the, the standards will remain consistent through the, because that's obviously really important. Okay. And then, maybe it's a plea on behalf of all of us reflecting tonight and also what looks like April 19th. Is there any possibility of avoiding single agenda item meetings?
Thank you for that feedback.
For all of you, as well as for us.
Thank you for that feedback. I, I certainly have been looking at the future agenda items and, and looking to consolidate, already speaking with our planning staff if we can, if at all possible, you know, make sure that applicants, you know, we're, we're bringing things forward timely, but also be aware of everyone's time as well here. So.
Great. Okay. If it's possi, I mean, I don't know if we can, I don't know if that'll be ready on the 12th, but if we could do it on the 12th, that would be fantastic, because it doesn't look like that's a heavy night. Yeah.
I have one more. I'm sorry.
Have to hold, because Commissioner Fresco has been waiting patiently.
I've got my back to, I can't say. As always.
We'll come back to you, though.
Well, just based on one thing that Leslie was asking about, about the surplus land, is there like a list of the city's surplus land somewhere on the internet? Because I've tried to look for that in the past, too. And of course, our city website is impossible to navigate, and now it doesn't seem to talk to Google anymore either.
Yeah. So, we, we definitely have a list, so we can put that together and provide it for the commission and, and put it on the website.
Maybe, yeah, it should be something you could find if you looked.
Yeah. I mean, that somewhat of a moving target, deciding which ones we're taking forward as surplus. And so.
Well, certainly the ones that have already been.
Yeah. So, there's a group that have been, and then there's ones that we know are coming up soon. So, we can definitely let you know about those.
That would be great. And then my other question has to do with Builders Remedy, because we got all those projects, and I've been kind of monitoring them, and I see that a bunch of them have actually submitted their full application, their, and not just the preliminary. Isn't there a deadline for when they have to do that? And, you know, how do we know if we're actually going to get all those units or not?
So, it's six months from the preliminary application when they have to file the formal.
So.
We are tracking that, and that's on the chart that we have on our website.
You can see it on the chart.
Yeah. And then, once they file the formal.
We do post all of that information online, and we are processing it. There are timeframes in response to SB 330. So, we are processing the applications accordingly.
As they come in.
They are, they are rolling in, so every project has a slightly different, different benchmark date for actions that we need to take.
So, what happens for, if any of them don't make that six-month deadline, they just go away, and that's the end of that? And they have to just try to, I mean, most of them can probably just reapply as a regular project anyway.
Right. Under SB 330, just generally putting aside the Builders Remedy aspect of it, under SB 330, generally, if you do not file this formal application within 180 days, or you have changed the project too significantly within that 180-day period, then the, the reach back to the preliminary application goes away.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
This is the last time I'm going to say this. I'm only bugging you guys because they're bugging me, and I'm going to stop letting them bug me. Do we have any idea when Inclusive Communities is going to be agendized? What did I say? Oh, livable communities. They want to do a presentation to Planning Commission, and they keep asking me, and I'm just going to block them. Or some, no, not really, not really. But they want to, they want to come and present.
If I could get that contact information, I, I have it in my inbox. If you could forward the most recent inquiry to me, I will reach out.
Most recent what?
The most recent email or inquiry you got with the, the right contact person, so I can reach out.
Oh, sure.
On the schedule, I'll, I will take a look at what's upcoming and, and see when we can fit that.
I think they actually met with Jane and some of your staff.
They did. They certainly did. But in terms of the actual scheduling.
No problem. I'll send it to you.
Have them reach out. We'll reach out to them.
Thank you.
Okay. I just had one question, which was the March 14th item last night, the emergency IZO for clarification of permit requirements for wireless facilities. Is that the same resolution of intent we're looking at?
That's correct.
Yeah, it's, it's all the same thing.
Okay. So, and it's all the same, the same regulations and rules? So, another reason? We'll talk about it.
We can talk about it during the ROI discussion. We can elaborate on that if possible.
I was trying to head that off a little bit.
Oh, okay. Well, yes, it is, this, the ROI is the permanent, is the start of the permanent change to what the council passes in emergency ordinance last night, which is a declaration of existing law and its clarification to the code.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So, that's, any other questions from commissioners? We're going to thank you very much for your presentation and, or your report and fielding our questions. And I want to move on to Planning Commissioner announcements. Request to speak on the agenda items must be submitted on a speaker's request form, we refer to as a CHIT, and submitted to the commission secretary. All requests to address the commission on public hearing items must be submitted prior to the commission's consideration of the item. Commissioners, do you have any announcements that you would like to make tonight? I do not see anybody. Oh, I do see Commissioner.
I don't know if people are familiar with.
You need to, can you come up here? Because I.
Sorry.
It's all right.
I don't know if people are familiar with the Burns sisters used to own the Marmalade and the Burns Restaurant on Wilshire. Well, Bonnie Burns and Beth were longtime friends of mine. I got the news that Beth, Bonnie died last week. She was 71 years old. And, you know, they grew up on San Vicente and, and owned the restaurants around here for many, many years. So, it's very sad.
Well, thank you for that announcement. What I would suggest is we adjourn the, the meeting in her honor. So, I'll, I'll give you that op, that option when we get to the end of the meeting. Any other, any other comments? None. Seeing none, we're going to, we're going to move on to the first agenda item we have, which is public input on items not on our agenda. Do we have any speakers?
No, we do not.
Okay. So, we do not have any speakers on public input for items not on our agenda. So, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. We have Consent Calendar 7A. Commissioners, is there anybody who would like to pull this item? I.
I would, because frankly, I mean, maybe I should have called staff, but I just didn't understand. I just don't know enough about wireless to understand what that staff report said.
Okay. Well, let's, let's.
I just need to, I just don't understand what it is. So.
All right. We're going to pull it off the, the item, and we're going to ask for a, a staff report on this. I'm just trying to see if, we don't have any public.
There's no request to speak?
There's no request to speak. So, if we get a staff presentation on this?
Or just a?
Just an overview?
Yeah. Okay.
So, just as a preliminary matter, this is just the resolution of intention, which is the first procedural step. This is not a substantive discussion on any changes that could be made. Last night, the city council adopted an emergency IZO that clarified some permitting requirements. It clarified the applicability of the zoning ordinance and health and safety requirements to certain personal wireless service facilities. When this, right. So, when this comes back to you for a formal discussion on April 12th, there will be an expert to explain all of this to you in more detail. So, again, tonight is just the resolution of intention. But I will say that these are technical changes to the code to clean up language, but is not making substantive changes to the code. It is a declaration of existing law, and there was just some ambiguity and confusion that could, could come out of the current code as written. So, we're cleaning that up to ensure that people understand what wireless facilities are subject to zoning permits and which ones are not, because there's federal preemption that gets involved. And then the other piece is ensuring that even if a certain wireless, type of wireless facility is preempted by federal law, and we cannot regulate it from a zoning perspective, that it's clear that building and safety still applies. So, that's kind of an overview of what those changes are doing. So, it's a clarification on that. But you, but there will be an expert who can speak to that when you are actually asked to make a formal recommendation to the city council.
So, what you're basically saying is that I don't really need to know what an OTARD or a personal wireless services device is? Because that's basically why I was like, well, you know.
Understood.
It's super technical. But.
Yes.
I mean, I understand that we have to comply with state law, and there's not really much discussion about doing that.
Right. So, to be clear, this, this, the substantive changes to the code were actually made in 2018. This is a cleanup to those changes that were made in 2018.
Right. I remember that.
Right. So, yes. So, there's, this is, this is additional cleanup from the 2018 ordinance, but the substantive changes were made at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Landers?
I just want to ask this in as, is it fair to say that there, that are, that there have been, I mean, I think for anybody who reads Nextdoor, it's clear, that there continue to be members of our community who have questions about wireless permit installations and potentially misunderstand what discretion the city has when it comes to putting them in, and where they can go, and who regulates the health and safety standards, and that if we do this, essentially, those folks who have concerns and are, you know, they have the right to their concerns, will have a lot more clarity about what is and is impossible in Santa Monica, and will have better direction about how they should proceed with respect to addressing these issues.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. That's what I thought.
That's the only issue on Nextdoor you want to clean up?
Oh, Jim.
Okay. So, I couldn't, I couldn't resist. All right, so we have an overview of it. Does anybody have any other questions, or should we call the question?
I'd like to call the question.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion, can I get a second? Or I'll be the second?
Okay.
And let's have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert.
Yes.
Commissioner Landris.
Yes.
Vice Chair Raskin.
Yes.
Commissioner Tulken.
Yes.
Chairperson Reese.
Yes. So that motion passes, and we will see the more formal, robust staff report at some time in the future, and we can all learn about OTARDS. Okay, we are going to move on to item eight in the main event, 8A. This is a public process, a discussion of public processes during the future of the Santa Monica Airport. And we'll turn to staff for their presentation, and I will just highlight for anyone in this, in this, in their seats, that if they want to speak on this item, this would be a great time to put in a CHIT. And Peter, before you get started, will you give me an overview of how you're going to go through your presentation? Are you going through the entire thing, and then we'll answer questions? Or are we? Yeah. Good evening, OTARD, over-the-air reception device. I'm going to explain it all here in a second.
We checked to see if we're broadcasting.
How do I move this thing up and down, Chris? While he's figuring that out, Sheila, there's a, are we sure that we are broadcasting the meeting? Commissioner Landris has a concern that maybe we're not.
City TV should be broadcasting, I can try to check with somebody to.
I'm reliably informed that we are not on Channel 16 right now, and that the YouTube is not reliable right now, so I just want to make sure if we're having a conversation about a public process, that the public can see the public process.
You cannot play this video. According to my quick jumping on YouTube, it is not, it is not working. So we're going to take a quick break while we figure out this technical issue.
I always record the meeting.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, okay, great, terrific. And Channel 16?
I'm on YouTube.
Can anybody see Channel 16? Maybe, maybe what we can do is tell the public that if anyone who's trying to locate our meeting on Channel 16 should be encouraged to try to get access to YouTube in the event that there is some interruption to the broadcast.
We don't have access to Channel 16.
Phone a friend? That's what Nextdoor is for.
If they can't get on to Channel 16, I would suggest they go to YouTube.
Right, exactly.
Okay. Peter, I think we should, we should go ahead. Thank you very much, Planning Commission. Good to be back, and this is the second time in 18 years that I've worked here that I've been in these chambers during daylight hours, so I really appreciate the time change. We're going to need every minute tonight, because we have a rather lengthy presentation. We built this deck to provide max information, and so we're going to take our time. And to the chair's question earlier, how are we going to conduct ourselves tonight? Because of the length of the presentation and the complexity of some of the details that I'll be conveying to you tonight, we've broken this into a couple of different chapters. And so we're going to complete a chapter and pause for clarifying questions, so that everybody is on the same page, and you don't have to hold your thoughts until, you know, another 45 minutes until we get to the end. And we're going to do this in three distinct sections. Before I begin the presentation, I'd like to introduce some of the team members that we have in the audience. This is a rather new crew for you, this is not the planning department, we are Public Works, and so I'd like to acquaint you with my colleagues. We have in the front row Amelia Feichner. Amelia is our capital program manager, otherwise known as the city architect, and Amelia has worked on projects like the Memorial Park Master Plan here for the city. We have Amber Reshane there in the back with the ponytail. Amber is our senior design manager. She comes from a legacy of working for private firms, but joined the city seven or eight years ago, and is responsible for the construction of City Hall East, the world's greenest civic building. And then Chris, Mr. Chris Dishlop, our assistant director of Public Works, has been with the city for many years, and he is most notable for his participation in the City Yards modernization project. And then I am Peter James, a former city planner, now chief operations officer for the Public Works Department. I worked with the planning department for many years on the city's long-range strategic plans, like the general plan, the downtown plan, and others. So we bring a lot of experience and knowledge in this space to talk about the potential conversion of the Santa Monica Airport at the tail end of this decade. So let's, let's dive in. Tonight, what we're going to tee up for you is really, we're really at the pre-planning phase, or at the, before the beginning phase, and so what we're going to be talking to you tonight about is the process that we've designed, some of the scope of work that we're envisioning moving forward over the next five years, the values and the principles that provide the guardrails for us to embark on this journey. And then there's an interesting section about some of the adjacencies, things that are happening in Los Angeles relative to the land at the Santa Monica Airport. Is that the only slide I had for that? Okay. And before I jump into the project's scope and process and everything, I wanted to start with sustainability as a foundational element. And the reason that we do that is because we want to set this project up to be really one of the most sustainable things we've ever done in the city. We have a tremendous opportunity on a very large piece of land, and we want to think about ways in which we can design and develop a future use for the airport land that serves not just our generation, but many, many generations of Santa Monicans to come. So we're not specifically talking about buildings and roads, or parks, or uses, we're really talking about people and families and ways that we can respect the relationship between human beings and the natural environment through design and other interventions that will persevere for hundreds of years. So a little bit about the airport's background and history, just to start with the initial planning slide. Here is an aerial of the Santa Monica Airport. As you can see here, it is one giant contiguous parcel of 227 acres. There are no dividing lines, it's one big piece, and 187 of those acres, which is about 8 million square feet, is taken up by open space, that's tarmac or parking lots, vegetated areas, et cetera. And there's about 40 acres of buildings that are present on the site as well. Taken together, 227 acres is about 10 million square feet, so it's a lot of land. In fact, it's 4.3% of the entire city of Santa Monica. By far and large, the largest reimagination project we've ever, we've taken on since the inception of the city. And as you can see from this blue line that I just threw up on the screen, we share the airport with Los Angeles. We, Santa Monica wholly owns it, but about 17 acres is resident in the city of Los Angeles. So that's a very interesting relationship that the airport has. To the north and to the west is Sunset Park Neighborhood, that's the only neighborhood in Santa Monica that touches on the airport. Directly to the north is the 53-acre Business Park, which is not part of this planning effort. The Business Park will pursue their entitlements through a separate process, and so we are really focused on the area in the, in the yellow. And then to the south and to the east is the Mar Vista Neighborhood of Los Angeles. Looking at this map, some could say that the airport is more oriented to Los Angeles than it is to Santa Monica, and that comment's certainly come up over the course of our outreach. As far as the zoning is concerned for the airport, there currently is none. As I mentioned, it's an unzoned parcel. Instead, there are layers upon layers of local and state and FAA regulations that determine what goes where and how and when and how much. We did designate it within our general plan as public lands, that's just sort of a placeholder for now. And the general plan does talk about deferring the future outcome of the airport to a specific plan. That was an idea that was germinated 13 years ago, when the 2010 LOSE was adopted, and so we're finally at that critical point where we're doing the work. And as I mentioned earlier, the Business Park will be pursuing their planning engagements through a separate effort. So the airport is obviously a very active place, has a highly visible, very strong aviation community, but that's not all that there is to the Santa Monica Airport. In fact, there's 166 or so businesses currently across 43 industry sectors. And the total revenues that are pulled in from landing fees and other aviation-related fees, as well as high-value leases, total about $20 million a year. And the way that the airport fund works, it's an enterprise fund, so money that comes in through leases or other revenues stays at the airport and is reinvested. So there's a cycle, every year 20 million comes in, about 18 million goes back out into maintaining the airport, addressing issues with the buildings, making improvements. So while it is a generator, that, we are not allowed by FAA regulations to create a war chest, in case you were wondering. Other uses that are at the airport, in addition to airplanes and other aviation-related activities, is recreation, a very strong, very active recreational component at the airport, cultural uses, like the Museum of Flying, the Ruskin Theater. The 18th Street Heart Campus is currently there, has been there for a couple of years, as well as Santa Monica College, that has an entire Bundy campus, not on the city-owned property, but just adjacent, and sort of collectively within the airport campus. And there's also a small modicum of retail, and of course, there's one restaurant remaining, Cloverfield, and we'll talk a little bit about where that name came from in a moment. And the city is currently legally obligated to maintain airport operations until December the 31st, 2028, after which time we have the ability to close it to aviation activities. And it's not a done deal, there are actions that need to result from council decree, and we've enumerated them here. When we first started this presentation sequence about a month ago, we didn't have all of this information, so this is, this is, the messaging is starting to change and adapt to the realities of the demands from the community to know, to have more access to what the steps are. And so the steps would be that we would need to provide written notice to the FAA, giving them at least 30 days, saying that you need to get your airplanes out of here. We would need to conduct environmental review on the site for sequo purposes, and also to determine if the site is safe for human occupation for whatever use is placed on the land. We'd also need to develop an ordinance that would allow us to enforce people that would violate the fact that it's no longer an airport. People illegally landing, people illegally taking off, all of these things need to move into the municipal code prior to us doing anything different with the airport. And of course, develop those mechanisms to create the penalties. Council has established a budget for the process that I'm describing tonight, I'm going to go into a little bit more detail about that. And now I'll move on to a bit of history. So before the airport became SMO, it was actually an informal flying field as early as the 1920s or even pre-1920s. 1916, our resident historian, thank you. In 1923, it was dedicated as Cloverfield for a fallen aviator who died in World War I. And that's where Cloverfield the street comes from, Cloverfield the restaurant, Cloverfield the movie, and the monster. They all are descended from Lieutenant Grubby.
Greaver.
Greaver, Clover, thank you. Do you want to do this presentation? Okay. And the, the event that dedicated the field that happened in 1923 drew almost 10% of the Los Angeles region's entire population. It was a very, very big deal, so 50,000 people at that time, LA's population was 500,000 within, within the city limits. And in 1926, Santa Monica bought some additional land using a park spawn, and, and over time, the airport actually shifted locations to cover, to cover the park that was purchased in 1926. And a big piece of the history revolves around a central figure in the aerospace industry, Donald Douglas, who established his airplane factory in Santa Monica in the early days. And just after, just a couple of years after that field dedication I mentioned, a Douglas-built aircraft took off from Santa Monica, actually, a couple of them did, and circumn, it was the first-world circumnavigation by plane, plane that had a wooden propeller. I think it took 20, it took a long time, flew 28,000 miles, and that's a nice piece of history for Santa Monica. Santa Monica Airport was also the place where the first sanctioned race for female pilots happened in 1929, featuring Amelia Earhart. Amelia Earhart, when asked about her success at that time, said, "We just want to be recognized as pilots," didn't need the blue ribbon. So that was pretty cool. Douglas was best known for his line of DC planes, the first one rolled off the factory floor here in Santa Monica in 1923. And this was, this plane was able to cross the continental U.S. from New York to Los Angeles in just 18 hours, requiring only three stops along the way. And this was the plane that really changed the game, because it was the first plane that could profitably fly without mail subsidies. So this was like the beginning of passenger travel by plane. One thing that I also want to note here is that, because this was the place where this all began and continued for many years, this was a site of great industrial production. And so there's a lot that we have to talk about in terms of what may lie beneath the tarmac. Some of it has been identified, but there's a lot that we simply just don't know. And as Douglas's industry grew, and as aviation in general became more popular, so did the workforce. And at, at peak operation times during the Second World War, Douglas employed 44,000 people in the city of Santa Monica. It's something on the order of 22 times our current highest employer, which may be the city, but just an incredibly large workforce working around the clock, seven days a week. Here's a couple pictures of men and women at work, this is where Rosie the Riveter comes from. And housing had to be built for this enormous workforce, and it was built in the areas surrounding the airport, both Los Angeles and Santa Monica upzoned, some of these agricultural tracts to accommodate housing. They did it at the perimeter of the airport and along some of the corridors that flanked the airport to accommodate the housing demand. But they didn't stop there. Douglas's imprint on the city extended beyond just housing to other amenities that we continue to enjoy today, like the Aero Theater, built in 1939 by Douglas for his employees so that they could enjoy a flick when they weren't working. And this was, this movie theater ran 24 hours a day. But aircraft production, at least for Douglas anyway, stopped in 1967, when he left the city for Long Beach to build bigger aircraft. And he had attempted to convince the Santa Monica officials to expand the airport, to build these bigger, to accommodate these bigger machines. But even back then, and this is really where the disputes begin in our legal history, is like, tail end of the 60s, beginning of the 70s, the city starts to step forward, acknowledging the objections of the residents to protect quality of life and to avert some of the deliritus effects of airport operations, noise, pollution, and they refused to enlarge the airport for Donald Douglas. And so he packed up his toys and moved away. And so it's been 100 years now, I think April 15th, sometime around then is the official one, the centennial of the Santa Monica Airport, being president in our community. And in that time, it's seen the region swell around it. There's some numbers on the slides here, you know, showing our, our own population, going from a mere 15,000 people back in 1923 to 94,000 today. At Los Angeles, just a half a million to 4 million and probably more. And in that time, we've seen, you know, Santa Monica's identity. And in that time, we've seen, you know, Santa Monica's identity change and solidify into this sort of sophisticated urban coastal community with lots of access options, people coming from all around the region and the world to be on the shores of the Pacific Ocean with us. But we've also seen the really dynamic shift in the residents' tolerance for having this type of facility in their neighborhood. And so the question that's really top of mind after 100 years is what does the next 100 years look like, or the next 200 years? And how will the airport's future affect that of the city? That's really what this project is all about. That's what we're here to figure out. So let's go into the legal history. It's just a couple of slides. Condensed it down. There are, you know, thousands of pages of staff reports that talk about the various disputes that have transpired over the years. But it gets down to this, you know, starting in the late 60s, 70s, the airport became the object of numerous political battles seeking to limit or to close the airport. So this narrative of closing the airport goes that far back. And it ultimately became a key precedent. Our example became a key precedent for various such airport battles across the nation, in which we saw communities pitted against land developers, local area residents and airport users, general aviation organizations, and the FAA. And over the years, because of city council action, the prowess of our city attorney, which ultimately resulted in an agreement, which is the 2017 consent decree at the bottom of that list, that allows the city to take local control over the airport land at the tail end of 2028. And again, it does obligate us, the agreement we signed obligates us to run it as an airport until the very end of 2028. But after 2029, the city can either elect to continue or to transition the land to different uses. And another key component of the airport legal history is Measure LC, which was a ballot measure that I'm sure you're all familiar with. This was on the 2014 general election cycle. And LC, for those of you that don't know or watching at home on YouTube channel, stands for Local Control. And this was a city-sponsored measure that promised voters that no new development would occur on the airport land without voter approval. And of course, it provided exemptions for parks, public open spaces. It gave the council the ability to fund repair or placement of existing cultural buildings, educational facilities. And the community overwhelmingly supported LC by a vote of 60 yes to 40 no. And LC was incorporated into the charter. So that's, that's an interesting piece of the legal puzzle as we march forward. And I think I'm going to pause here to see if there are any questions about the legal context of the airport. And Heidi, if you can put on your Susan Cola hat and help me out here if I get into some deep waters. Ready?
Okay. I suck. I'm going to go with Commissioner Fresco this time.
I just want to nitpick and say that in 1923, the city was leasing the airport, 217 acres. And in 1926, they used a bond to purchase it, and they didn't actually expand it at that time?
No.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
In the future, if there's any other fine detail that you're curious about, I'm here for you.
I know you are.
Okay. That's all.
Peter, I saw you being very excited about that.
I just want to clarify for the record what I think we all know, and that is if the cities or the community decided that they would like to see some housing developed on at least portion of this land, it would have to go back to the voters, correct?
That's correct.
And there's nothing the state could do at this point to preempt that?
Well, that is, that's an interesting question, and I think we don't know the answer currently if, because we don't, we can't predict the future. We don't know what the Surplus Land Act will look like in 2029. And so I think the, the question is going to be about, does a local, does a local regulation that lives within the city charter supersede state law? Or does state law supersede a local regulation? And I just don't know enough about it, and it's not.
I'm not done. I'm not done. I just have, as you probably know, Heidi knows, there is state law that does not, makes it impermissible for voters to basically downzone a piece of land and reduce the housing capacity on that land. But that was, was that 330? That was post 330. This happened before that. I wonder if in any way that would play into what we're talking about here.
So we'd have to look at that, but the baseline for 330 is 2018.
Right.
Right? So you're, the, you cannot reduce housing capacity below what was there in 2018.
And there was none, so. And again, just to confirm, LC has no escape hatch. So if somehow this turns out to be financially infeasible, we need to think, we think everything and probably go back to the voters. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Landers?
So I just, I believe, I want to just check my understanding that this is the case. I think the only piece of legislation that would potentially impact LC is SB 10. And SB 10 permits the city council of any city to authorize a bit more, one larger building per parcel, but the airport is one parcel. So if I'm not mistaken, I don't know what the city's interpretation is of SB 10, but even if SB 10 were seen somehow to override LC, which is a big, you know, which is a big question, we're talking about 10 units of housing. Yeah. If the city council wanted to.
Commissioner.
I will just say that it is a very complicated, as Mr. James alluded, is a very complicated legal question as to whether or not any state law could completely preempt a city's charter. Right? That's a very complicated legal question and not one I'm prepared to delve into at this moment.
But it is something that we are thinking about early on. So for the folks that are listening at home and this type of conversation freaks them out, our best, our intention right now is to gather as much information as we can so that we can plan for the future. So we're trying to bring together all these various components of regulation and see where they sit in a hierarchy so that we can work with the community to chart a path through the minefield or whatever euphemism you want to use, you know, to get to an outcome that works for all of us.
So you suggested that we would have to do a SEQA report based, before the airport can be turned over to other uses.
That's correct.
Is that correct? So if it turns out that there are pollution, whatever, under the runway where the factories used to be or whatever, who pays the restoration remediation of that?
I think it will depend on the location where we find the contamination and if we can find culpability, as we have done with Boeing in the past. And I will touch on this a little bit more. It's deeper in the presentation. It involves the scope of work that is going to occupy the majority of 2024 in terms of site investigation at the airport to get exactly to that question you asked.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Raskin?
Yeah, forgive me if I'm jumping the gun, and feel free to defer this to the future if it's coming up soon, but can you just give us a ballpark idea of how long the ground leases are set in place at the airport, generally speaking? Like, do we have ground leases?
Yeah, generally, generally speaking, we don't have very many ground leases that are going to go to term at the end of 2028, with several exceptions that were recently authorized by council, I think, in the last closed session, last Tuesday. They are predominantly in our, what we would refer to as our high-value leasing zones. So it would be to the north of the airport, adjacent to the business park, the admin building that is there for airport administration, and a handful of buildings that are adjacent to the Bundy campus. But the rest of the airport is sort of being held at month-to-month status. If, or maybe there's something a little bit different happening there, but we're not thinking more long-term than that. Yes, sir.
Does that include the museum? Is it on a lease?
Let me ask my esteemed colleagues if they have any information about the museum's lease.
Museum flying?
Yes.
Yeah, they don't have any longer.
Is it, are they, is it month-to-month?
That I don't recall.
Okay. So I think the museum is in the same boat as the other tenants.
Great. Okay, I have two quick ones, which is, you mentioned about 40 acres of land that had buildings on it. My assumption is a lot of those buildings are kind of warehouse buildings that are like, not exactly structurally, don't have a lot of a structural integrity and most likely will come down and expand that open area. Is that a safe assumption?
It's a fairly safe assumption, yes.
Like 50% or more?
Possibly. I know there was some work that was done in 2010 to look at that, and then that will be something else that we take on as part of our site investigation to understand what the playing field is.
Okay. Because it seems like that would expand that area dramatically. And then the last is just a comment. I heard you say that the council has already approved a budget for the SEQA work?
No, the council's approved the budget for the planning work.
Okay.
And we'll have a nice conversation about whether you think it's sufficient to do the job or not.
Because I was going to say, whatever it is, you're going to need more money for that SEQA, for that SEQA.
We agree. Yeah, we agree. Yeah, the money that we have does not include SEQA. I think we're going to have to be very strategic about how we split projects off of the planning work and, and, you know, there's a keen interest in the community to have a day-one plan, even while we're pursuing, you know, a long-range, you know, 100, 200, 300-year plan. And the key that unlocks all that is occupation of the site, which we can't do without environmental review. So we are thinking now about building reserves so that we can begin site investigation and be ready for remediation when we're allowed to, you know, get onto the tarmac and start the work. But it, but as we've talked about, it's all very complex and convoluted and lots of contingencies.
And of course, SEQA is not as.
So we need to make sure we're.
Absolutely. Commissioner Fresco?
I just had a question about contamination. And obviously, you'll find this out when you do your research, but does, do runways, are they, do they absorb as much pollution as the area under factories? Like, is it, is the risk really where there have been factories? Or are we concerned about what's actually under the runway?
I think we're more concerned about where there were factories and where there were fueling stations than we are about the runway. But we have to look at the runway, too.
Right. Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Yep. Shall we press on?
Yes.
Please.
Great. So let's talk a little, a little bit about what we have heard over the years. This obviously is not the first time that we've all talked about what could happen at the airport. We did have a series of very focused discussions about a decade ago, maybe even a little bit longer, in the context of planning for what we call the non-aviation lands, which is outlined here in yellow on the screen. And it's about a 40-acre slice of pie that runs along Airport Avenue that was given to us by the Federal Aviation Administration as being a space where we could program uses that were not incompatible with aviation uses. So the city marshaled its forces, hired MIG, and conducted a series of outreach sessions to talk about what was possible there. And it sort of fell into these themes that you see on the screen. People wanted open space, better access. They had ideas for green businesses, clean tech incubators, urban agriculture, things like that. And we moved on, on several of these projects, as I'll show you here. Like, from that exercise, actually, things started to happen. The 12-acre expansion of Airport Park went through a design exercise and was cleared through SEQA. Fortunately, we lost the funding during the pandemic, but we do have this as a plan of record, shovel-ready, should the community or the council decide to move forward with this plan in this location. Again, we, at the time that we were planning this, we were working within constraints of that non-aviation land. We don't have that anymore. So that's a question mark for the, for the community and for boards and commissions. This park envisioned an additional, I think it was like two new sports fields, 300 new community garden plots, a jogging track, and an elevated berm from which people could watch airplanes, airplanes take off and land. There's a little snapshot of what that would have looked like. This project was done by Rios Clementi and Hale. Another project that happened, physically happened as a result of that outreach that was done back in 2010, was the shortening of the runway. So in this case, we shortened the runway, which was 5,000 feet. We took off 2,500 feet, sorry, 1500, yeah. We were at council last night, so we're a little blunt. Yeah. 750 feet from each side. We brought the bulldozers out, naturalized the site, and planted wildflowers. And here's a, here's a picture of what that looks like today. This effectively cut jet traffic out of the picture, right? This would, the runway was too short for them to be able to effectively take off and land. So that was a very impactful project that happened in 2017, to start with the striping, and then later 2019 with the physical project. We've slowly been making our way through several of the buildings on Airport Avenue, addressing many, many years of deferred maintenance, leaky roofs, ADA issues, lighting, things of that nature. So these improvements were called for by the community to preserve the cultural education and nonprofit facilities that live along that corridor. We also looked at improving Airport Avenue. This is the only east-west connection across the site. Interesting fact, it's not actually a street. It's not a street. It's a city easement, so you won't find it on our transportation maps. And we did hire a concept designer. We built out several different versions of Airport Avenue into a multimodal street that could accommodate bikes and scooters and cars. But the gross order of magnitude costs were really large, and this was about six months ago, very, very high costs. And so, given the current financial climate, this project was punted, but we hope to bring it back in the project that is before you tonight. And then perhaps the most compelling and captivating idea that came out of that early outreach was the idea of Airport to Park. And this is a community-based idea. There's an Airport to Park Foundation with a, with a membership board and local advocacy. And Airport to Park is the idea that we would convert a lot of, part of, all of the Santa Monica Airport into a regional-scale park, something that's similar to Central Park in New York, Golden Gate Park in San Francisco, or, you know, name any large metropolitan area with a large park, that, that kind of idea. But beyond just sort of a physical amenity, it really gets to resolving some longstanding issues that have been present in Santa Monica for quite a while, such as our park deficiency. And, and so a park of this scale would really bring us up to, sort of, on a per capita basis, to be in equilibrium with communities around the Los Angeles region in the world in terms of the amount of open space per person in the city. The idea also gets to creating a hierarchy of parks throughout network, descended from a large regional park that is rich with water features and amphitheaters and sports complexes and natural amenities, down to the level of the neighborhood park that is really tailored to the needs of the residents to living in that immediate area. And then it's also a nice reframe, you know, it's sort of, we're not going to build a city around buildings or streets, but really build it around a park. So it has some really nice attributes. And it's been picked up by a lot of people that have done their, their own visioning work, and we just took these off the internet. So this is the one view of how this might look. And you can begin to see that green scene that goes towards the Pacific Ocean. And then here's another rendering of what that looks like. And in this one, you really get a sense of the scale. It's just an enormous, enormous piece of land, again, 10 million square feet of land up there on the mesa with views of the Pacific Ocean to the west and the Hollywood sign to the east. And so the city heard the community on this and wanted to chase the idea down. So as part of the Parks and Recreation. So as part of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update that was happening between two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and twenty, it included an additional commission for this report, which is called the Airport to Park Conversion Report. And this was done by MIG and, and Rios in collaboration. And it, it was, it was pulling case studies from all over the world, which I'm gonna share with you tonight, some of the, some of the different case studies of how other communities had pulled this off. And then, no, they're not all examples of airports, but there's military bases and there's large underused parcels. There's islands and harbors and things like that. And the intent was really to figure out how they did it, what were the implementation pathways, how did they pay for it? And what was the pre-planning effort like, you know? Did they, did the city all of a sudden start a huge team of people? Or did they pull people from public works and planning and engineering, that type of stuff, so that we could get started? And then the pandemic hit and we didn't get started. So we're a couple of years behind. So, that brings us to where we're at today. So after, you know, all this legal history and, and, and serious intention of the council over many, many years and many, many meetings to say we're closing the airport, we're finally at the point where we can start the planning work. And so the budget that we have presently in this fiscal year is a hundred thousand dollars. That's our startup money. We're using that to do the RFQ and the RFP process, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And then for the substantive work, we have one million dollars. I'll leave it at that. Why plan now? Well, we have a lot of different voices in the community and we have a very limited amount of time before the airport's about to close. We obviously have that advocacy for the great park. There are a, a very loud and deep-pocketed group of folks that want to keep the airport open. There's those that advocate for housing and other mixed-use activities at the airport. I can say from the city side, we certainly have a need for modern, new facilities and representation in that part of the community as well. And then there's, you know, the need for jobs and continued economic growth and recovery. So the question is really, which way do we go? And that's gonna be quite the process because very close to the timeframe for airport closure or some of these other very large things that will all be before this board, this commission. So we've got, you know, the airport closing at the end of two thousand and twenty-eight potentially. Ten months later, the next housing element is not just in process, but it's due to the state. And that will bring a whole fresh new set of arena numbers. And maybe they'll be different than what we got last time. Or maybe they'll be the same. We just don't know. But that's a, that's a real, a reality that the community is gonna have to struggle with. And then sometime around two thousand and thirty, depending on how Roxanne and Jing structure the work plan, you know, we'll be talking about the organization of the entire city and the development of the city. How do we evolve over the next twenty years? What are our priorities? What's our work plan for the next twenty, thirty years? And all of that's happening at the time that we're in this process, planning the future of the airport. And then we, we put there as just a final reminder that the Surplus Land Act will be in some iteration. Perhaps it'll be gone. But what we've seen, what you all have seen over the past several years is that it's becoming increasingly more aggressive year after year to identify and program underutilized public land for the purpose of building affordable housing. So that is, again, I will say, this is why we're bringing all the pieces together now, six years before closure time, so that we can enumerate what the obstacles are and, and work with the community to chart a path through those choppy waters. So getting into these a little bit more, maybe I don't need to spend too much time on these because we just talked about it. The next housing element cycle will be for the years two thousand and twenty-nine to two thousand and thirty-eight. California was given, you know, or, Southern California was given one point three million units. We were given nine thousand, almost nine thousand units in the last housing cycle. The circulation and land use element will be looking now, turning, to turn that grayed-out four point three percent chunk of the city into a different color. And that will be an interesting dynamic between the land use and circulation element in this plan, especially if we go with a specific plan, which we think is the intended outcome of this process. Those two will have to talk to each other. And then the Surplus Land Act, as I mentioned. And so this is, this is the adjacencies bullet point that I referenced at the beginning of the meeting. We're not the only people looking at the airport in terms of planning. We've met with the Westside planners that are doing their palms for Vista-Delray Community Plan Update. They've been doing them for a number of years. And they have looked at the airport, especially that seventeen acres that's in the LA jurisdiction, as well as the Bundy campus, and have workshopped it with their residents. And the feedback's been pretty interesting. And I'll just say, like, from a legal perspective, you know, LA is required, like we are, to place a zoning designation on the map. And so they've done that. There's a zoning designation on the airport right now that lives within LA. Their initial concept is this, which is to designate it as a single-family housing, because that's what exists across the street. But the planners say that the process isn't quite over yet. And so they're out for more community engagement. And our presence now in their planning framework definitely, I think, changes the game. But we had a really interesting conversation, was it, was it last week? Lot, just last week. We went to their offices in downtown LA, lawyers, lawyers, and it was really interesting. So I think we're gonna continue talking, because there may be opportunities for us to, to move forward in partnership, not just from a zoning angle, but from, you know, accessed Bundy access, Walgrove access, and sort of regional partnership. And we've also met with Council District eleven and we're setting up a meeting to meet with Supervisor Hovarth in the future. When you dig into the details, you know, move past the color on the map and you move into their workshop notes, you see things expressed slightly differently. So now you see, you know, an apologies if this is too small for folks at home. This is as big as I could get it, still have it fit on the screen. But you see calls for public parks, botanical gardens, you know, outdoor dining areas, one-story buildings. And then you also see things that say Century City, Playa Vista. So they're kind of all over the place. And this is what, what the planners were saying last week, is that, you know, they're kind of all over the place and we need to get them into containment. And we're gonna do that through more engagement. So we'll, we'll be watching closely. And we, we are going to begin engaging with LA residents as well. Just because now this is a live project and they deserve to hear from us and we would like to hear from them. And the last piece of this particular part, segment of the presentation is that there is a precedent for there to be Santa Monica-owned land in other cities. Our water treatment facility off of Bundy is in Los Angeles. And so this one's a little bit different because it's a water treatment facility and there's all kinds of exemptions. We can use our building code on this piece of land, but the land is designated as public facilities zone. If this land were designated residential, we probably wouldn't be there. So, not uncommon. Any clarifying questions about all of that?
Commissioner Landers?
Thanks, Peter. If we can go, I have a number of questions. If we can go back a few slides. Going back to your envisioning the airport as a park, just any of those sample slides. Yeah, either one. And what struck me, and I'm just curious about this, some of what we've heard, and let me just say, for the sake of public transparency, I'm, I'm, I'm an inactive, really inactive member of the Airport to Park Advisory Board, which has no fiduciary role, but I just wanna be transparent about that. The, these visions of the park don't do what has occurred at some other parks, which is to preserve the notion of an emergency landing strip. And I'm wondering if that's a deliberate choice on the part of, sort of, is that where direction is going? Or are you looking at all options? One that completely chops up the park into a variety of areas? Or one that preserves sufficient open space that in the event of something, you could conceivably land something there?
I will say we're not even there yet.
Okay.
Because we, we are not designing anything. We are facilitators of the process.
Got it.
However, in consultation with absolutely every single department and division in the city to create the request qualifications that just closed on Monday, we did include some language about the, the, the teams that would be proposing. They need to really think about the fact that this has served as a mass distribution center, as an emergency staging area in, in any, any concept that they bring forward. And, you know, how severe is that? We don't know yet. If you go, if you design a park for public safety, you're gonna end up with not a great park, I'll say that. So I think we will just take time to work through what the true needs are of, of the resiliency community and our community and how that interacts with parks and other uses.
Got it. Okay, thanks. And then, and but there are no, we don't know of any, I mean, the feds could do anything, but not with respect to, to maintaining the airport. I understand that we can close it and there were some who'd say that we could close it without Sequa. But would we, do we have any, are there any regional obligations or state obligations that could require us to keep an emergency landing strip, even if it were grass?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
We haven't really dug too deep into this notion. It, it's definitely come up several times, but I haven't heard the city attorney's office weigh in on it in any way.
Got it, okay. And then moving forward, I do wanna kind of put a bracket around, because I live quite close, I wanna put a bracket around any discussion of the Boston Properties site, which you bracketed because I'm, I'm, I'm actually conflicted out on, of discussion on certain parcels that are less than a thousand feet away from my house, but
Gotcha.
So I wanna be very careful. But, so you did have a great conversation about housing. I'm wondering if there has been any preliminary analysis of circulation opportunities, right? We don't, Santa Monica, and this comes up in relationship with the city of LA as well, we have very limited access from the south. We also have very limited bike and pet access to the, the current Airport Park, right? The small parcel on, and, and next to the Santa Monica College site, which itself also has very limited bike and pet access. Some, you know, one of the slides that I would have imagined would be one that did, on the kind of, a housing imagination on a, on a circulation imagination and whether or not there are opportunities to look at where our circulation is going, both in terms of north-south, dare I say it, powered vehicle traffic, but also north-south multimodal traffic, bike, head, stuff like that.
Yes. We do, we do have some initial traffic analysis. It's from two thousand and ten. So it's part, it was part of that old
Right.
outreach process. It's, it's in the scope of work for this project to redo it and to think about the opportu, there's definitely a, a big thing, big piece for transportation here. And it's not just about getting to and through by car or bike, but it's also access to Expo and rethinking Bundy completely.
Yep.
Maybe rethinking Walgrove, Twenty-third Street completely.
Rethinking the end of Sentinella that
Yeah.
that terminates at the airport right now, but could conceivably
All those streets, all those streets that, that almost cut through, but don't.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's all on the table, but we're just not there yet. We are planning to plan right now.
Okay, I, I raise it because I think it's, I mean, this is getting toward a comment. But wouldn't you agree that it is important for the public in a, anticipating a public process to see the full scope of what that public process could include, which isn't just about what's happening on the park, but also how do you get through the park?
I do agree.
Okay.
And it's coming soon.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Does somebody do? Since Sean brought it up, I'll, I'll pursue it. I think the lease actually has some language about the coordination of, of the business park revisioning and the airport visioning. They don't have to happen together, but is there any plan? Because I, I think Boston Properties is roughly on the same timeline as the airport closure, if I'm not mistaken, in terms of their lease expiring. I know a specific plan is in, is being thought of and I don't, you don't have the staff to do it at this point for the business park.
Commissioner Lambert, I'm gonna cut you off for half a second, because I've, I think the city attorney wants to mention something about
Right, so I think Commissioner Landers expressed some concern about a conflict that he has with those properties. So we could keep it more at the policy level, more at the thirty thousand foot level and not discussing specific properties.
Okay, I get it. Can I just ask if there's some thought given to coordinating or to
To, to planning, the, the planning part of all of this, will, the, can I say business park?
Will the business park be part of that global planning effort?
We don't, we, at present, we, we don't know. We know that we're moving in, we're moving independently. The land use and circulation element recommends, recommends that we do them both together.
I'm sorry?
That we do them both at the same time. That's the recommendation. It's not a should, or, I'm sorry, it's not a shall, it's a should. And, you know, again, that was written thirteen years ago. And, and things are different now. So we're, we are okay moving independently. I, there may be opportunity for us to coalesce once we have figured some things out. And, you know, it's always better to anticipate your adjacent neighbor. And so I'm sure they'll be watching us. I'm sure we'll be watching them. I know there's a representative here in the audience tonight, maybe he or she can opine on when that, that intersection may occur. But for now, we are keeping this a public process on, about public property.
And I would just add that we are having conversations with Boston Properties and they're thinking about what their future move might be.
Okay.
So definitely, you know, as they move forward with their process, we will make sure the two efforts are well coordinated.
Right. It just seems like that would be a loss of a revenue generation source if we don't sort of include them.
Yeah, yeah. And there's, 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 I think you'll see as we move through the presentation, there is some pre-thinking to that level already. But it's, you know, it's, we haven't taken it to the streets yet.
Was that cryptic enough? Okay, good.
No, and if I made sure, the, the city attorney has, has confirmed my understanding that planning to plan does not create a recuse, a required recusal. It would only be if we started talking about actually what's happening on parcels that are within
I didn't do that.
that limit. No, you didn't. That's why I'm clarifying. So I think we're, I, I just, we're, we're fine.
I think we're all good. Let's, let's, Commissioner Fresco?
I had some, well, first of all, regarding that north part of the property that I'm not gonna name. The reason there were so many parking lots there is originally, that was supposed to be the park. Because, so, just, it's a little alarming when you make plans for parks and that happens because there was a golf course over here and they wanted to replace the golf course. So that's one thing. Another thing was, these aren't really questions. It's basically, what I'm kind of trying to highlight here is every single point you brought up that people are concerned about now is an age-old concern that's been around for a hundred years, since the beginning, and basically we still haven't solved it. So one thing that might be comforting to realize is that that business park is actually where the factory was for Douglas Aircraft. So that means it's their problem and not ours. So that's cool.
Right, that is good. Yeah. And, and I mean, that, that, that is definitely further on our cap.
Right. And that might be why maybe they didn't want to dig down and build taller buildings, so.
Yeah. A redevelopment of that site would probably kick off that process.
Right. And the city, of course, wanted to expand that business park and have more golf courts, golf course winding around. And LA wanted to make that housing then too. That was also a big point of contention.
Commissioner Fresco? Try to keep it to questions, because we still have public that needs to speak and then we can have our discussion.
Okay, the last thing I wanted to just point out, which is, do you wanna know? That's my question.
I do.
Is that the west end, which is now a field, that whole portion of the area was an extension in order to make the runway longer for Douglas Aircraft when they made a bigger plane and they couldn't take it off. And it was housing. It was a neighborhood that was very sparsely developed. It was a neighborhood that was very sparsely developed, so very few people were actually displaced, but it was actually a part of the residential neighborhood.
Really? On the mesa there?
Yes, yes.
Above 23rd Street?
Yes.
I did not know that.
It was one of the last pieces of Santa Monica to be held by a Rancho family until very, very late. And so they were very slow to move on it.
Do you know what their names were?
Yes. Machado.
Okay, okay. I don't really.
I'll give you more detail about that.
I'm pretty certain this is not a question.
Oh, wait, I have one more question. That's an actual question.
Actual question?
You have outlined so much important history, which of course I'm very excited about because I'm very interested in that. And as part of this process, are you thinking about ways for us to remember this really important site in our city's history that influenced so much about the city?
Of course.
Once it goes away. So that's.
So we, we have, on the more technical side, the scope does include budget and a presence for an architectural, I'm sorry, not architectural, a historic analysis of the site, which would of course involve interviews, writing the historic context, identifying potential landmarks. There's, there's one and a half landmarks on there right now, which seems crazy after 100 years, there presumably may be more. But I think the process also will, you know, bring storytelling into the fold where people can share their experiences. I mean, every single little kid that grew up in Santa Monica has spent time at that observation deck watching the planes take off and land. I was at a council meeting a couple weeks ago where we had a, there was like a 13-year-old pilot that talked about, you know, his love for flying. So there, there's a lot that we will dig into for the project.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Any, any other questions, commissioners?
I got, I got two. Please. Vice Chair Raskin.
Thank you. Yeah, I got two questions for you.
Okay. Hope I can answer them.
Yeah. So you added the slide up there about the biennial budget process. And so I, I realize that there are quite a few legal parameters that limit the use of the airport funds, but I'm curious if you've looked into whether those funds could be used for the future planning of the airport.
I have a note here. Let me see if I can find it quickly. There are some strict limitations on the use of the airport funds. One thing that, since we're talking about it, the airport cannot generate a reasonable surplus. So we can't, as I mentioned before, we can't build a war chest. That would prove, if we did, that would prove that our rates are too high and therefore illegal. The only release valve there are for things that can be done to improve the airport. And that includes remediation of the site. So we can build some funds for that. We can improve, things that improve airport operations. But we cannot generate a surplus without improving the property. So it is pretty much some handcuffs that we have on us right now. And at the end of 2028, the leading assumption is that whatever's left in those reserves will go back to the city. There's some narrative out there that says the FAA will grab it. We don't think that's true. And then the other question is, well, can we keep all the money that's being generated from those leases to roll into the implementation project? And from today's perspective, 2023, March 15th, the answer is no. The city wants to take that money and roll it into the general fund to keep the lights on in other places and keep services rolling. But the outlook may be more positive as we come out of this pandemic and economic recovery takes root. So we'll just have to see. Again, a lot of this, the things that happen at the city are because people show up and advocate and make it happen.
Great. And one other question, since we're talking about adjacent development in LA. I, I haven't been following too closely, but do you have a sense of the time horizon for the redevelopment of the Penmarre site?
No, I didn't know that was even on the table.
Well, I think that that's the long-term plan, but.
Have you guys heard of that?
Duckmore?
No. No, we haven't. We, we know they just invested, we just invested with them several million dollars to build that underground storage facility. So that would, that would, that would hurt a little bit if they did that. No, I have, I haven't heard anything, but we can certainly chase that down with the West Side planners to see if it's in their community plans, which would be, I think, the first breadcrumb that we'd look for. Interesting.
I want to tag on to one of the questions Vice Chair Raskin asked, which was about how you can move, use the revenues. And what I think you just alluded to, you could do it for remediation. And you earlier talked about how there's potential for a lot of remediation, but can you talk to me again about the timing? Did you say we had to go through the CEQA review first so we can understand and figure out what the mitigations are? Or can we be over the next seven years using that surplus to remediate stuff we find?
We want to do it now. We, we can't, if it is used to improve the airport land, we can do it now using airport funds. So again, this scope of work has language in it to do a site investigation, to look at the environmental and ecological conditions. The actual remediation work is not part of this scope because this is like a planning exercise. So we would get information from our consultants that would do the field investigation and then we would go and contract with a remediation specialist that would begin the coursework.
So that is, so basically you're, you're saying that that is your plan. You want to use those revenues that are available to the city now from the airport to specifically remediate it, which is consistent with what you're supposed to use those money for.
Right.
So it's a win-win for us.
It's a win-win for us, both in terms of getting to day one and, and making best use of that million dollars that we have by not using the million dollars to do the, right, the work.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners, at this point?
And, and for the community, I just want to highlight that we have at least one speaker, if not two. We, they will get a chance to speak. I'm just thinking if we let you speak now, you're going to miss part of the presentation. So I think it makes more sense to wait until the, until the end.
And I'm almost done.
Okay. With, with that, Commissioner Landers?
I'm, I'm waiting for a answer and I don't want to pose the, I don't want to pose the question until, I, I don't want to go to discussion until we've gotten that resolved. So if we can go to this, this mysterious RFQ, if we could finish the presentation and hear from the public, then maybe that gives time to resolve the pending question. Thanks.
Okay. Wait, just for clarity, what's the pending question? What have I missed?
The pending, well, then I'll ask it out loud. I've been asking staff to see this RFQ for a week and there is not a way for us to, we were advised that we could log in with our city, we could log in with an email to get access to it. We're talking about an RFQ that I think the public has an interest in. It is now closed. I don't see why it can't be made public. Should have been shared on our agenda. Candidly, we've, we've discussed this. I'm a little frustrated in terms of having a public process and then a doc, then documents that aren't readily available for a discussion. So I tried to access it using my city email and I can't because the only city emails that are, can access it are the people who are actually on the procurement team. So they're not going to be able to approve me in, which is the case for every other commissioner on this day, as who may have thoughts on, you know, where we go from here. So this, I'm, I will just express that out loud and I hope a resolution can be found because I think if we're talking about it, we need to be able to see what we're talking about.
Thank you for sharing your feelings. We will, we will post the RFQ. It's closed now, so we will, we will put it up tomorrow. Here we go.
See it for our discussion?
It's, it's a lot of text. 80 pages. Okay. So I'm moving on to the process and the process is really designed to answer three fundamental questions. This shouldn't really surprise everyone. The first question is, what exactly are we working with? You know, we, the airport's been in existence for 100 years, but it's been operational during that entire time. We, we know that there are some contamination in certain locations. We have, we know, we have GIS maps that show where the utilities sort of terminate. We've never really done a comprehensive existing conditions report for the airport because we haven't really been able to get onto the airport land. So the first thing that we want to do is answer that question. What are we working with? What do we need to actually do to get the land ready for its next use? Second question, which is the one that, that's on the top of everybody's mind, is what do we want this to be? And I, I think this is an area where I need to caution again that we want to get out of our own circumstances here and our own lifetimes and not demand that something's done in our lifetime, but really think about the next generation and the generation after that, and the generation after that. This is an opportunity of such significance that to focus only on the needs of today would be truly a tragedy. So this conversation about what do we want and what do we need as a community moving forward is really essential to ask. And then the last question is, what can we afford? We, as a city of 8.3 square miles, 94,000 residents coming out of the post-redevelopment era, the post-pandemic era, what can we reasonably afford to do with this land? And what is the timeframe for doing, doing that? And the process unfolds. It's probably very familiar to many of you. We're going to use the early visioning work that was done at the beginning of the decade as a stepping stone and embark upon a scenario planning effort. So this is a, it's a, this is a planning effort without the details of zoning or height and mass and all the stuff that gets people really upset. This is really just about uses and balance and really understanding the trade-offs that come from elevating some of these key concepts and testing them economically, testing them socially and testing them environmentally to see what the best mixture is, the best recipe for success is. And this will give the council and the community a sense of the economic magnitude, you know, how things work out, as well as the priorities, like what, what are people really getting behind and what are they not supporting at all? And we expect that the scenario planning process will last at least two or three years, if not more. We just have to, we just don't know. We'll have to see as we dive in. And when we arrive at a preferred scenario, which will happen at the end of several years of discussion and debate, we can take that preferred scenario and convert that into the regulatory document, which is the specific plan that begins to bring in all of the details of the map and this is where the roads go and we're going to do this in phase one, two, three, four, five, how we govern the land. A lot of the examples I'm about to show you, they don't rely on the city council to be the, the governing body for some of these special sites. They have trusts. They have, you know, organizations, nonprofits that are really stewards of the land. And then implementation, which we anticipate will span many years, perhaps many decades. And so we're not thinking about a one and done situation. We're thinking about something that's going to be incrementally built out over time. And so the three scope pieces are fairly simple. They answer those questions I just put up there, you know? What do we, what are we working with? That's the baseline. That's the existing conditions report. And that will contend with a variety of environmental, ecological, transportation, historic, cultural, utilities, infrastructure, a whole host of factors that begin to paint the picture for what, what is this canvas that we're going to be painting a future use on. The second piece of scope work is of course the engagement and I'm going to share some more thoughts with you on that. I just want to say that the engagement is going to be embedded in, for, in scope item number one and scope item number three, mostly in scope number three. But we, again, we want to, part of that baseline is establishing the local context and getting to know the local authorities on the subject. So there, there'll be a little bit of outreach during the first year, but the most of it will come in, in the, in phase three, which is scenario planning. And that's where we'll begin to, you know, talk about the park in more detail and, and develop a variety of scenarios. The way that we're thinking about scenario planning now is that each scenario will be anchored by a park of significant scale. What will make the scenarios different is the mix of uses that support the construction and the ongoing operations in maintenance of that park. And so of course, the, the size of that park will be quite elastic based on the mix of uses that are presented for economic feasibility and for community acceptance. And so here, here are some of the financial models that are drawn directly from that airport conversion report that I talked about. So this is not our work, but we're putting it up here just to get the conversation started. And I, I present three here. We know there's more, but these are sort of like the, the big three. The first is the city finance model. So this is where the city pays for everything, either through a municipal bond, some kind of levy, or an enhanced infrastructure financing district. And we begin to slowly convert the hardscape into softscape. We see this traditionally done in much larger cities. The report, these are not my words, the report itself, done by independent contractors, does state that this would be extremely challenging for a city like Santa Monica's size. The example that is often pointed to as an exemplar of airport to park is Temple Hoffer Field in Berlin, which is a, an airfield that was constructed by, by the Nazis prior to the Second World War. It's 750 acres in size and was quickly converted from an airfield that closed in 2008 to a park in 2010. And Temple Hoffer uses this interesting model. It's called the participatory, participatory planning model, where people are allowed to experiment with different uses on the land. And if it works, then it's folded into the plan. There is also a, a plan in 2013, I want to say, to add housing to the site to pay for some of the sizable maintenance costs. But there was a referendum that came from the community and housing is now prohibited on this site. The next model is the benefactor model. This is where the city would partner with a private individual or, or companies for naming rights or special use privileges. This brings slightly more budget into the equation to build roads, to convert more hardscape, but there's also going to be a trade-off in terms of the public's access because the benefactor may require certain seasonal timeframes for, for private use or, or, or something along those lines. And the benefactor model has been used in many different places. Governor's Island, which is a very famous park, done by James Corner Field Operations, who did our Tongva Park across the street, is an example of the benefactor model. And this is a historic military island that is predominantly like educational and cultural uses that's also home to this fabulous park. Almost $300 million in construction for 32 acres. Of course, they had to boat everything over there and it has $16 million in annual maintenance costs. And that, that's a theme that we sort of hit hard in this presentation is that the maintenance costs for, for these parks are pretty high and they really need to be considered, especially if we're talking about building something that's going to last for 500 years. Tongva alone costs us millions and hardly anybody goes there. An interesting new footnote on Governor's Island is that it is now being converted from a benefactor model to a public-private partnership model. The benefactor model has not been sufficient to carry the maintenance costs and so they are now rezoning to allow for some development on this site. And then there's the classic public-private partnership model, which, of which there are many examples around the world, in California and in our own city. And this is the example where the city would lease or sell portions of the airport land to neighborhood development interests in order to fund construction of a, of a park or, you know, whatever the community wants. And this is by far the, the most robust budget, but of course, the trade-off is that the park really would lose significant pieces of scale. And there, and it, there are issues of growth and change prevalent throughout our community that are likely to, to come out during this discussion. And Downsview Park in Toronto is an example of this. We chose this one because they, this is a public-private partnership model with housing on the site. What's interesting about this one is that it was developed as a sustainable mixed-use community. So they have very strict energy and water requirements, the building materials, things of that nature. I think we would do something similar if we went down this path. And it's, by all reports, a very interesting place. And as we continue to study examples of, of conversions, we're also watching airport conversion projects. So this is a project in Greece that was announced back in November. This is a big one. It's 600 acres. It's the Ellen Con International Airport. It closed in 2001, I believe, 22 years later in planning. We're saying three, so I hope I'm not off the mark. 22 years in planning, they're finally starting with the, like the formal design and implementation. And they're, they're kickstarting this with a 6 billion euro investment. And what's really cool about this project, if you read into the literature, the designers, so. And what's really cool about this project, if you read into the literature, the designers, Sasaki, is designing this for a thousand year project life. So they're, they're taking the context of Athens being, you know, a very ancient culture, ancient city, and saying, well, we're going to, we're going to keep that going. We're not going to build for 100 years, we're going to build for 1,000. And this designer actually is, has submitted to our project as well, so that's very exciting. Another one that we recently became aware of over Christmas is the Seestadt in Austria. And again, another 600 acre, former airport site, 19 years in planning and an initial investment of 5 billion euros. So these projects are big, they take time, and they cost a lot of money. So a note on outreach. The council has asked us to go big on the outreach and we knew that request would come. And so in our RFQ, we've outlined that we'd like to do both the sort of traditional stuff as well as, as new things. And we want to, we want to penetrate deep into the community and, and reach not just the voices that, the traditional voices, but those that often feel disenfranchised or overlooked or, or can't participate for a number of reasons. So I'm going to show you a video here in a second of the big idea that we have for that, but I also want to touch on the fact that we will be talking to Los Angeles, we will be talking to key stakeholders, the young and the old, and reaching out to those that are in seats of power throughout the region that may want to be in partnership with the city of Santa Monica in this endeavor. So with that, let's see if this works. It does sound on, I presume? Yeah?
What are democratic lotteries and why do we need them? Well, one of the problems is that we don't see ourselves in our democracy. Decision makers at every level are consistently older, whiter, and wealthier than the general public. Non-white racial groups in the U.S. make up nearly 40% of the population, yet only 23% of Congress. And even though women make up half the population, they still only make up 27% of Congress. And that's an all time high. We don't see ourselves reflected in those who make decisions on our behalf. And it's not just decision makers. Those who participate in traditional politics follow the same trends. We hear from the same voices over and over again. We don't see public decision making as something we all can do. This leaves large portions of the population left out of decisions that affect their lives and disenfranchised from politics altogether. In order for democracy to work, we all need to have a place at the table. Imagine a democracy where our public decision making reflected our diversity, where everyone participated in in-depth policymaking, where expertise was both valued and questioned, and where our government was a tool we all used together. Sounds too good to be true? It's not. We're already on our way. Democratic lotteries ensure that all of us, from every walk of life, have a place in public decision making. They bring together everyday people to talk about the toughest policy issues. Here's how they work. First, 5,000 to 15,000 invitation mailers are sent to randomly selected residential addresses throughout the community. There are three levels of randomization throughout this process. This is the first. Next, it's time to crunch the data. That means that if women make up 50% of the population, they make up 50% of the panel. Or if those under 25 make up 20% of the population, they also make up 20% of the panel. Then the data is entered into the open source software called Panelon. Panelon takes the data and creates hundreds of potential panels that are both random and demographically representative of the community. Each potential panelist is assigned to various panels based on their demographic makeup. This is the second level of randomization. And finally, after creating hundreds of potential panels, each random and demographically representative, it's time to select just one. It's time to be in it to win it. At a public lottery selection event, the panel is selected. Those who are on the selected panel have won the democratic lottery and will take part in extensive deliberation around the issue at hand. At the end of the process, the panelists will hand over recommendations to decision makers. Democratic lotteries are elevating the voices of everyday people in public decision making and designing a more collaborative democracy together.
Great. So the idea of a democratic lottery was brought to us by council. In response, I think, to a couple, couple factors, notwithstanding that council's always interested in, in reaching new voices. But with, again, with a project of this significance, there seems to be a commitment on the part of council to invest in this very, very costly process. In addition to the participants being randomly selected and chosen at a live event, they're also paid for their time. Childcare is taken care of, meals are provided. So the, some of those traditional barriers tend to fall away. And it could be a very interesting way that we move through the airport planning process. And this wouldn't replace outreach, but this would create sort of like the citizen advisory panel for that transparency between the actual, the content that's going into some of the workshops, how it's developed, what messages are going out as a liaison to council. So let me, okay, I'm almost done. Thank you for your patience. Just touching a little bit on the goals, we're using three goal sets currently to define the project and I'll, I'll tell you a little bit about them. One, we want to be accountable to the community, so we're going to be using the council's priorities. These are the priorities that were adopted just this past Saturday. So, you know, racial justice, equity, social diversity, economic recovery, cultural offerings, things that are clean and safe, sustainable, et cetera. The big one that I want to focus on and that we all are learning more about every day is something called the Living Community Challenge. And I'll say that, and this is where Amber can really speak later on in, in the discussion and the questions, our city called East was developed to the living building standard, greenest building in the world, greenest civic building in the world. And it was very, very hard, right? And it was expensive, but the result is absolutely beautiful. And if you haven't been over there, spent time in it, you should come, we'll take you for a visit. The Living Community Challenge expands upon that idea at the district scale. So now we're talking about resource conservation, we're talking about regenerative design, we're talking about building healthy relationships between human beings and nature, living within our means in terms of water and energy, and, and having those as very firm guardrails for the design of whatever it may be. So we're very excited to use this. We're going to be going out to DC in May to learn more about it and to sit down with the creators of this program and bring that information back to inform our project. The last goal set is for the park itself. These were enumerated in the conversion report. So this came out of outreach back in the day. This is like 2018 outreach, 2019 outreach. And they're, you know, they're, they're all great goals that could be applied to a park or to, or to anything really. But, you know, a couple of the key goals to point out is that it is self sustaining and that it is inclusive and that it is connected. So at least we have some initial goals to inform the park planning moving forward. So just on the timelines and the structure, this is the structure that we enumerated in the RFQ, where the city sits at the, the head of the table and we're surrounded by experts in the field of transportation, economics, urban design, park planning, placemaking, engineering. There may be some legal angles to some of all of this because it's very complex. We have to actually decommission the airport as well, as well as arts and history. The timeline is, is rapidly underfoot. As you can see here, the first year, 2023, which we're in right now, is really all about, you know, getting the consultant on board, doing this type of outreach. This is our 13th night meeting that we've done, something like that. We have a couple more to go, so we've really been on the road. We've got Recreation in Parks tomorrow night, we have Arts Commission on Monday, and we've been making our way through everybody. But we did close the RFQ on Monday and we got some great consultants and we will be winnowing that list down and inviting a short, a short list of people to propose on our RFP that will be coming out later in April. And so your feedback and the feedback that we've been getting as we've been on the road show are really, is really going towards creating that RFP. So it's the details of your comments, they make their way into the actual request for proposals. The RFQ is really just about, you know, are you qualified to do a big mega project? And can you, are you okay with our budget? And some people were and some people weren't. But the RFP is really where the rubber hits the road. And we think that we'll be contracted by winter sometime and then moving into the sequence. So you can see the three year sequence before you. The first year is really that existing conditions stuff. And then we move into the visioning, alternatives and concepts before we get to the preferred alternative. And again, this timeline is optimistic. So a quick recap before I stop talking and turn it back over to you. We've determined that we're about to embark on a very lengthy journey, a process of discovery to determine the future use of the Santa Monica Airport. We're going to look at a lot of different things. The great park will be central to all of, all of the scenarios. It's going to take the participation of everybody in the community, everybody that we can reach, to define the vision for ourselves and for the generations to come. And that we have a variety of different goals that are going to at least start us down the path. So some fairly generic questions for PC. We don't have to stick to these if you just want to have discussion. But I think more than anything, like we'd just love to get some input from you to inform our RFP, things you want us to study, things you want us to chase down, things you would like us to return to this commission with more information. And I'll stop there and I, again, offer my colleagues expertise to answer your questions. Thank you very much. Commissioners, let's hold our questions for just a second. Let's hear from a public really quick.
Okay.
Can we do clarifying on this section? No. Let's just keep, you'll, you'll write it down, write it down. Okay. Okay. So we're going to have public comment, as right now I have one speaker slip. Frank Gruber.
Hi, good evening. Frank Gruber, 2442 Beverly Avenue, Ocean Park. I'm also here, I'm on, I'm the board of Airport, the Santa Monica Airport to Park Foundation. And I want to say that we at the foundation fully support what the staff is doing, what they're proposing, the process, we think it's very good. So I'm going to be critical tonight, but it's loving criticism. We love what the staff is doing, it's great. Okay, good. So I want to start with a couple of things. So history, as Commissioner Fresco said, this was a park. There's all those pages about the aviation industry, they're basically irrelevant. The city's been trying to close down all that for a long time. There was a golf course, there were tennis courts, the park spawn was a real park spawn. What we're talking about here is the restoration of a park. More relevant than the aviation history is actually the legal history because it gives the function for the fact that those aviation people want to keep an airport there. The city has been trying to close the airport for close to half a century. There was litigation in the early eighties that ended up in the first settlement agreement with the FAA, that was in 1984. Under that, the city could close the airport in 2015, but the FAA reneged. More litigation ensued, which after the Ninth Circuit sided with the city, resulted in the 2017 agreement. It was the 2017 agreement that allowed for the shortening of the runway. After the 2017 agreement, the city has already voted to close the airport. In effect, it repeated that vote in January when it started this process. A future council could change its mind, but at this point, all that is left are ministerial actions and it's misleading to make it look like there are significant legal hurdles to close the airport or any possibility of continuing aviation there. You don't need a sequo analysis to close the airport. With anything you build, of course, you have to have sequo because regardless of the history, what needs to happen now is to plan a great park and how to finance and build it. But don't be pessimistic. Conversions of industrial sites, including airports, have happened and are happening all over the world all the time. Chrissy Field in San Francisco, Meeks Field in Chicago are recent examples. The park will cost money, but the most expensive part, the land, was paid for a century ago, $2 billion worth of land. Okay? That's what we're talking about. Publicly owned land that has been used for private purposes for too long. As we, as you've heard, the airport generates $20 million of income, mostly from leases. That will grow as aviation, more aviation uses are replaced with non-aviation leases. That money will only be available to the city if the airport closes. As you've heard, if the airport operates, that the limited, the use of that money is very limited. With a revenue bond, that income can be, can fund up to $200 million in construction costs as well as annual maintenance. It's a lot of money. There's also lots of other public money, Measure W, all sorts of county measures and state measures. In effect, there's already a public partnership to build the park, a combination of the lease revenues.
Okay. So your time is up, but I would like to say if there was, if there was a last comment or two you'd like to make, please.
Three, four more to find. The important thing is to keep it simple. Establish a budget based upon what funds knows, what funds the city knows will have available in 2029 and plan a park within that budget. A park that is environmentally restorative and provides for both passive, passive and active recreation. Keep it simple. What do we want? It was a big question for you. 60% of the voters of the city have already said what they want, a park. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you have any questions for Airport to Park, I'd be happy to.
Do you have a question?
I do.
Okay.
My understanding, coming out of redevelopment for many years, is that bond, and maybe there's a different kind of bond issue you're talking about, that bond proceeds cannot be used for ongoing maintenance, only for construction costs.
Wouldn't be, what I'm saying is $20 million a year.
Of what?
Of, of, in, say you have $20 million of lease income coming from the airport, which is the profit. And those, by the way, those leases occur because our organization went to the city and said, after the 2015, when the city got control of the land back again, start charging market rents and take away the subleases that the aviation. That money comes to the city. The city can issue revenue bonds against that money. Which is typical, 20 years, that funds $200 million of the construction costs.
Are you, do you know for a fact that bond proceeds can be used for maintenance?
I didn't say, that's for construction. Leaving $6 million a year of income that could be used for maintenance. Not, no, the bonded money would only be used for construction.
Oh, okay. And isn't that money going to go, that, those revenues going to go away when the airport ceases?
No, they, we're leasing to SNAP. The city owns buildings that it's leasing to non-aviation businesses. That money used to go to the avi, the, under the 1984 agreement, the aviation companies have the ground leases, not the ground leases, sorry, the building leases. They made most of their money not by flying planes, by, by subleasing. Volkswagen used to be there with their design company. The city took that over after 2015 because our organization said to them, you have an opportunity here to get that money.
Okay, thank you.
There were a lot of other things that came up. SB 10 is, we, we got an exception.
You're, you're.
Okay, I know.
Frank, thank you very much for your time. Great to see you.
Really look forward to working with it.
Okay, great. Let's take a five minute break, but let's try to make it five minutes so we can get to, back to our comments. Okay. All the more reason, let's do this quickly. I have, the time is 8:07, so by 8:13, I want to be back in session, please.
Okay, folks, we're going to get back to, we're going to get back to work here. We're going to start with our comments and questions, and I'm going to start with Commissioner Landris because I cut him off on comments or questions earlier. So let's get there.
I don't have comment, I mean, I do have things I want to say, but I have clarifying questions on the last section, so I just want to make sure we're taking the, a minute to understand all the pieces. So primarily two. One is on the Democratic lottery, which, if we're in discussion, I would say is a terrific idea. Do you, do you anticipate that the Democratic lottery is something that could also potentially incorporate participatory budgeting at some level?
As far as the budget for the airport project is concerned? Or the city budget?
No, the, the, the airport part. In other words, there's a land use conversation, right? That you could imagine a Democratic lottery envisioning what's happening, but there's also kind of a, how the, how the part, if, once there is a park, any number of things could be happening on it. And you could imagine a Democratic lottery plus participatory budgeting process that kind of gives a twist on what's happening at Tempelhof Feld, right? With the, with the, you know, pilots and stuff.
Yeah, I can see that happening.
Okay.
Yeah, because I, you know, the Democratic lottery will result in, in, in a single advisory panel. That's how it works. So it narrows it down from 15,000 randoms to, you know, a panel of 30 or whatever it ends up being. They will move through a variety of different policy issues. Budget will be one of it, and I can see how, because of the size of the site, you know, we may want to have a corollary budget process. And then they would be right alongside city staff and boards and commissions as part of that ride.
Okay. So that leads to my second question, then we'll come back to the lotteries. Have you looked at JPAs with CD 11 in the city of LA? A joint powers agreement? I believe state law now permits JPAs with subunits of city governments.
Um, you know, we, we met, it didn't come up. Frankly, CD 11 is more focused on homelessness than they are on land use decisions right now. So our meeting was, our meeting was, you know, fairly one-sided. But it's certainly something that we have been thinking about in terms of getting stuff done here. The need to form those regional partnerships, you know, or district level partnerships. And we're going to aim, we're going to aim even higher. We're going to, as I mentioned, go talk to the supervisor to see if there's interest on the part of the county of Los Angeles to be a partner in this. Because we have, some of the, like, the transportation issues are very difficult to resolve on our own, and they're not even in our jurisdiction.
Mm-hmm. And then, so circling back to the Democratic lotteries, it's, just as an observation, it strikes me that there's a Democratic lottery, uh, I'm just wondering if you thought about this, that there's a Democratic lottery to be considered within the city of Santa Monica broadly? But there's also, to the extent that there's a JPA conversation with CD 11 because of the whole south side of the park, is there potentially a Democratic, a separate Democratic lottery conversation to be held, say, with people who live, work, or regularly play within 2,000 feet of the boundary of the park? And that's maybe 50% Santa Monicans, 50% Angelinos?
That's a very interesting comment, and I have not thought about that, but I'm glad you did.
You're glad I said it out loud?
Yeah. Well, it's, you know, look, we've, we've done a variety of neighborhood meetings as well. There's definitely people on the neighborhood side that say, no, this is just for Santa Monicans. But there's a healthy half that says, look, this park is facing LA. We don't ever get to that side of town. Definitely go talk to the LA residents. So I think it's, it's something that's going to have to come out of more conversations, how we structure the random pool of participants, you know, how, like you mentioned, how far past the boundaries? What is their level of commitment? These all need to be figured out. And that's why it's kind of nice that the existing conditions phase is going to last for about a year, because it gives us time to do that kind of work, to figure that stuff out. And then, when the time comes to do the visioning work, we're ready.
Got it. Thanks.
Commissioner Lambert.
I continue to worry about feasibility. And first, let me say, you're doing everything you're supposed to be doing. I mean, you're definitely following the direction of what the voters wanted and proceeding, you know, very methodically in that direction. I'm worried about feasibility, and I sort of wonder at what point in this process of developing the plans, et cetera, there will be a feasibility study done?
Feasibility based on...
Based on whether we can pay for it.
Yeah. Well, that, that comes in the scenario planning phase. Yeah.
Well, more like cost and sources of funds.
Yeah. Well, that, that comes, that comes in the, in this, well, there'll be, so the structure of our teams involve, there's definitely a very central role for an economist.
I'm sorry?
A central role for an economist in this project. I'd say the two main people in this project is going to be either the urban designer slash landscape person and the economist.
You also need an estimator.
And, yes, and they, all the teams that came forward, well, most of the teams that came forward brought an estimator with them.
Do you see at what point in the process that would happen?
Well, I, I think, obviously, it would come when we start to develop scenarios. We would test them for feasibility and, and we would understand, you know, what the cost of pre-construction, construction and ongoing operations and maintenance is, and what revenues would the ingredients bring to the table? That would give us a value. As far as, you know, value capture, that's a little bit of a different exercise. We can begin to establish a baseline during the existing conditions process, just to understand, like, what's the value of the raw land? What's the value of the land plus, single family, plus, you know, whatever, park? Your comments will help us better inform the RFP if you want to be real straight about where you think that we should be doing these exercises, at what phase in the process, whether it's the beginning or if there's a certain trigger where we need to sharpen our pencils.
But just for your information, I'm, I'm on the board of the Hollywood Cap Park nonprofit, which anticipates capping the 101 freeway, and we need a feasibility study, and we have an ongoing construction estimating function. It's just part of the project.
From where you are at right now, or from...
Well, we've been at this for 10 years.
Yeah.
But the feasibility was done, was done some years ago. And it keeps getting updated by the estimates of the, of the project.
Yeah.
It's really important.
Well, I, I know. And so I, I think a lot of people in the audience, which is small now, but it's been, it's been larger in the past, they, they get really frustrated by a particular message that we continuously pound, which is economic self-sufficiency.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've all been through the exercise with the Civic and lots and lots and lots of projects in Santa Monica where we design these crazy things that are beautiful, but we can't afford to pay, we can't afford to build them. We don't want to do that.
Well, if you still had redevelopment, you could afford to do the Civic.
Don't.
I know.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying that's really important. The other question I have is when you go out to the community and these, these groups that you're going to be forming, is there only function to vision this land as a park?
No. The park is, a park is an anchor because that, there's a strong sentiment that, for a variety of reasons, this, part of this land should be park. But, again, what will make each scenario different is the ways in which that park, I don't know what, how big that park is, but how big that, or how that park is supported financially in perpetuity by the mix of uses or the ingredients that are on the site.
So would you entertain ideas that weren't authorized by LC?
Yeah. In fact, we even put them on the screen. I think, I think it is, so far, we haven't gotten our wrist slapped for putting this on here yet, right? So this is sort of the spectrum. Park, non-revenue generating, costly to build, maintain, mixed use, revenue generating, growth concerns. So that's sort of one side to the other, and what we're going to evaluate is everything in between.
And then in terms of this representative, this, whatever it was called, the Democratic lottery or whatever, how are you going to, is this going to be break, broken down by, like, ethnic group, income level, renter, homeowner?
It's, it's, it's demographically representative of...
My theory is it's going to end up with a whole lot of white homeowners.
If that's what the demographics provide, then you're, you're probably right. And then that may be, lend more credence to Commissioner Landris' option to consider expanding the boundaries. We, we are just learning more about this process. There's only a handful of people that actually, firms that actually do it. If you're interested in doing more research, I would look up the Petaluma process. It's gotten a lot of press for its success. Also, a fairly Anglo-Saxon community. And that, these things are also very expensive to run. I mean, I think Petaluma was $450,000.
It just seems like you might want to consider, and tell me what you think, of somehow weighing different ethnic groups in terms of their representation historically in the city. For example, maybe the Pico neighborhood, you get, you know, you count them twice, you know? I don't know.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, don't you?
Yeah. Well, I do know what you're saying. And this came up at our Disabilities Commission meeting as well, because disability is, is not something that's captured by the census. Right? So I think we need, I think we need to, you know, go through our hiring process, select the firm, and then work with them as the experts to address these types of tricky questions, which are all valid questions, and we totally understand where you're coming from.
And then finally, I'm hoping sincerely that when you pick a financial consultant, that you actually open it up to the market of financial consultants, that you actually RFP and look at a variety of consulting firms versus the one that we always use. If you get my, if you catch my drift.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Fresco.
Sorry, far glasses.
Got it.
I had a question about the Democratic lottery also. You know, with the Civic Working Group, we tried a new innovative kind of outreach thing, and we really pushed it hard citywide and got 1,800 responses total. And from what I heard verbally, there were a lot of people who had figured out how to game the system and that it actually didn't even represent that many people. So what I'm concerned about with this Democratic lottery is, how are we going to actually get more than the 250 people in Santa Monica who always show up to actually respond to this lottery? And, you know, does pay and childcare really make that much of a difference to people who have busy lives and careers? I see a nod. So I don't know, I just, I think it's cool, but I'm skeptical. And then, you know, it was just such a disappointment what happened with the Civic.
I agree.
And what do we do if this looks like it might not work out? Do we just have to go with it once we start, or...
No, I don't think we're bound by anything. I think we just need to look into it. I mean, the Civic, I'm glad you raised that. It was disappointing for a variety of reasons.
It was.
I think to Leslie's point, you know, that they were given the opportunity to try to balance the economics, and in the end, they didn't care what it cost, right?
No, they didn't.
And that was, and that's, that's kind of scary.
Yeah.
So hopefully through, you know, a slower pace on this one and a bit more in-depth and upfront enumeration of some of the obstacles and the realities and the city's desire to do something that's economically sustainable, we can, we can get past that. As far as the Democratic lottery is concerned, we're not experts. We're just learning about it, and we'll take your concerns and bring it to the team when they are before us in the interviews.
Right. And there is a lot of, maybe not census-related data, but there, well, actually, census data too, but there is a lot of information about different populations in Santa Monica historically that could be reflected in the way those groups are chosen. And, you know, there's just tons of historic information.
Yeah. And I, and it would probably be in line with Santa Monica's tradition of making precious and unique a, a program that is off the shelf, right? Trying to modify it to be special. So we'll look into that.
We're very special here.
I know.
We can't afford to be special anymore, but we still want to be. Thank you.
Okay. Other commission comments, questions at this point? Commissioner Fonda Benardi?
Yeah. A couple of things. In designing this planning process, do we have carte blanche or are there legal obligations that we have to hit in designing this process?
I don't think there's any legal obligations on the table. No, I think it's just more about community expectations.
Okay. And then my second question is, you know, we had a process for designing a very small park, 100th the size of this new park across the street. And a lot of the people are here who worked on that, who were present during that process. What do we learn from that process?
Great question. Anybody in the audience there work on that park? Tongva? Lessons learned from Tongva?
I have a lesson.
Okay.
One of the things that happened with that project, because I was on the landmarks commission, and we were looking at Tongva Park and we were looking at the city park, and we had a great designer. But I felt a little bit like everyone was so odd by this designer that certain things just, they just, I mean...
just, they just, I mean, basically, the city hall park in front here, it's a historic landmark, it was in pristine untouched condition, but it became more important that this historic park respond to the new park across the street than the other way around. And I felt like that starstruck quality that happened made us make a bad decision, and we lost a historic landscape that is forever changed. So that was, you know, we're going to get great people because this is going to be a great project, but we still have to hold on.
Yeah, we do have some really great, we do have very, we have that same person actually as well. We have a lot of great people here. I, you know, it's a tough question because of the current situation happening at Tangva Park, which one could.
I was, I was sort of asking more about the process when Tangva Park was created. Was there things along the way that with hindsight, we would do differently? Obviously, there's hindsight things we might do, the outcome, which would be different, but the process, which is what we're talking about.
Yeah. I, I, I don't know. Do, do you, did you, do you object to the process that?
I don't remember the process. It was sort of, feels vague in the past.
Yeah.
I was hoping someone was here that.
I was, I was there for it. I mean, it's, it feels vague to me too, because it was many years ago. But, you know, there were, there were, there were internal consultations with us, city staff, there were external consultations and events with the community. I remember there were pop tops, you know, on the old Rand Lot, people were trying to identify special places by dropping, you know, dropping something to.
Views.
Yeah, exactly. They're, yeah, they had a process that, and a quality of experience that I think was very compelling to the community. And obviously, they've been quite successful in other communities as well, so they, they must have gotten it down. I think there's a lot we can learn from them, we can learn from our own processes and learn from new stuff that's, that's out there.
And last question, you seem to hint that the working panel of this might be 30 people. That number was sort of, seemed like a pretty large number, which very inclusive, allowing many different democratic, demographic.
Yeah.
Representation. Any sense for an optimum size for something like this? This is a year, three, five-year process.
Maybe more if, if it continues to the specific planning. No, I just, I tossed that number out because I, you know, we met with the West Side Planners last week, and they're, they can't afford to do the Democratic Lottery, and they're doing, they're doing like 16 of these community plans by themselves. And they have convened panels of between 30 to 50 people for their, you know, their district. So the one I showed on the slide was Palms, Delray, Marina, I think. And so they have 30 to 50 people that, that are on the advisory panel for that group. Probably a little bit smaller, but I don't know. We'll have to ask, we'll have to ask what's reasonable for, from the consultants when they tell us how, how it all works.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions? Because I think he has one. Yeah, okay. Commissioner Landers?
Yeah, I just want to, I mean, I actually want to say some stuff. Because I, I think that you're doing extraordinary work here and, and like former commissioner, former planning commissioner Frank Gruber, we should have introduced him as such. You know, this is coming from a place of like, I want this to be as strong a process as possible. I do think you should pursue the, I do think you should pursue the JPA option. I do think you should pursue potentially within a Democrat, I mean, Democratic Lotteries, I'm not sure if that's a, you know, proprietary thing. There are obviously multiple models for that, that you're going to want to explore, right? But I would encourage you to look at running two simultaneously, smaller ones, one that's around the park and one that's from the city, because I think those are really different. There's sensitivity around who's a resident of the city that could drive the, the city-based one. I think living around the park is as much about use and commuting and access to sports fields. And so you'd want to define that one maybe a little bit more inclusively, not just with the city of, not just with the residents of the southern side, but also with people who use the park or potential park users or who commute through the park, because that's really an issue. And I raise it because, and this leads to a larger point, I have said this over and over again throughout the housing element process. I'm really frustrated with, with, with state regulations that don't allow us to walk and chew gum at the same time. It is, I understand why you have a slide on the housing element that's coming in a decade, but it frustrates me that that's essentially a constraint on our planning rather than having us be able to say, we want to, you know, once open space is gone, it's gone, right? So we want to be able to preserve this open space, and we want to work with the state and the feds and the county and our neighboring city to be able to do that in a responsible way. And within the constraints of my proximity to the, to the area, we want to think creatively about how we leverage the private parcels that potentially could provide some housing around the park without disturbing the park, about which our voters, fully democratically, even in the face of an opposing referendum, made amply clear that, that we want to keep. So I, I really want us, I, I think, you know, another potentially a missing slide is what's the legislative advocacy that needs to happen here to create an, an authorizing environment that doesn't, you know, hopefully one that's allows us, hopefully one that helps us succeed, but at least one that doesn't force our failure from the get-go because of competing demands that might be placed. I mean, we got a letter of the same, the different versions of the same letter from someone throughout the housing element process who was demanding that we convert the airport to housing today. Also Ocean View Gardens, also, you know, wasn't just, also Penmark, right? Like someone who's just, let's skip the process and just go straight to housing. Maybe there is a conversation to be had about housing, workforce housing, affordable housing, but, you know, let's make sure it's a, one that's integrated with our commitments to sustainable circulation, sustainable, sustainable, open space. This is not, right, I'm, I'm repeating myself, so I'm going to stop there. I, I also do think, I mean, I'll just, I think, I'll say it out loud. We will have, you know, multiple iterations of this body and of the city council moving forward on this. I do think we need to, I'm, I may not be the only person with a, with recusal issues. This is a big, moving parts kind of a project. I would encourage you to invest some time upfront in creating the boundaries, the ethical boundaries for participation by us, housing commission members, council members, parks and recreation members, anyone who, who will be dancing around this over the next eight years. And then lastly, and I'll stop here, I really want to push on the circulation. I remember, Peter, I don't, were you with us when like Francie and somebody, I think it was Michael Brodsky from Airport to Park and a bunch of us all walked the perimeter trying to figure out where we.
I was with you.
Okay.
But I have done that.
You've done that, right? Trying to figure out where can we put a bike lane? Where do we want to put the paths? What does it mean for the kids who go to school, you know, in the neighborhood, whether it's Jams or Grant or Edison or, I mean, particularly Edison or Will Rogers, to be able to walk or bike safely to whatever fields are in place? I think we need to pay more attention to that upfront. Sorry, last two things. There had been some conversation, and I think if we're putting everything on the table, what are the land swaps, right? If we commit to a larger great park in this area, are there places, are there places elsewhere in the city, maybe even close by, I'm being very careful about how I frame this, maybe even close by, that could be flipped into a different use in the, in the interest of preserving a contiguous great park? Land that is now parkland because other land wasn't available, right? Let's have that conversation so that we know what choices we're making. And then, and then finally, I think, really just keeping, I mean, doing what you, you all are doing so well, which is making sure that that vision of what's possible is front and center in the community as much as possible. I'm sorry, we only had one public comment tonight. I would like to see more people involved. The Democratic Lottery is, is a great way to do it, but also I'm just thinking about other parks, even Tempelhof in Berlin, you know, just pushing those visions out there so that we, we see forward motion, even if it's not forward motion, but keeping that vision, because it's beautiful and we need it.
Thank you. And since the question, a lot of question came from you, I, I want to invite Amelia up to talk about the RFQ being online. But before she does, I just want to say one, something you said I wanted to address. So, and, and we've heard this before as well, from Airport to Park, is that they've asked that we sort of change our tone and talk about this process more about, like, more of a frame of positivity about getting the park. And so I just want to, you know, go on record effectively and say, yes, that is our intention. But I do want to say that, you know, being a planner, having worked in the space for a long time, I'm not entirely comfortable with saying that the community has decided that that is going to be a park. I know that there was a vote on Measure LC that said, no new development will occur on this land, and then there was an exception for a park. We never had public discourse. We never had workshops. We didn't talk at council. We didn't come to the commission. We didn't do any of the stuff that we would do for a tiny little park for a big park. So I don't know where that, you know, puts, puts me right now. I just want to say like, we haven't done those things, and there could be a lot of people that don't want a park. There could be more people that don't want a park than do want a park. And so like, that's what this process is about. We're trying to stay very neutral about it, and that's maybe where kind of like our messaging is not as sunny and optimistic as the, as the pure vision of Airport to Park, because we know we have to deal with these huge challenges. We know we have to deal with a variety of different perspectives and viewpoints, and we also know the crushing reality that is facing the city in terms of all these, you know, different levers that are being pulled against us. So it's felt like I should say that.
And, and that's, I, I mean, mostly, I think I was saying open space, like, and that's, and, and the circulation piece, right? Because there's disagreement about whether you would run a road through a park or whether that open space should be left to, you know, become much more natural, you know, much more natural and not a plain, I mean, I'm not sure, I'm trying to avoid expressing my feelings about what should be there.
Yeah.
Now, I mean, I have thoughts, but, but, you know, it's about the, about the process and about the vision of the community of saying, the airport should go away. There is a, you're right, there's a resistance to, there's a resistance to, to development with very, very small exceptions, including, I think, some arts uses.
Yep.
Right, that are consistently there, right? But there is, there is at least the beginning of a vision, and I think we should assert in a broad view of an integrated vision of housing and open space and environmental sustainability and sustainable transit and multimobility, that we're standing for that. Whatever it might end up being, we're affirming that we want to do this in an integrated way and in a thoughtful way and not be forced to do one or the other to the exclusion of the third. That's really my, where I'm going.
Okay, so why don't I have Amelia come up and tell you what magic she has worked out in the past 10 minutes?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Hello and welcome, by the way.
I'm going to go all the way to the beginning. Sorry for flipping everything. There we go. So on the screen, that is the project website. We have heard your request and uploaded the request for qualifications, the both addenda, so addendum one, that did have a few just typo revisions to the request for qualifications. So I would suggest look at the RFQ revision one for the latest. Also, we included the presentation, the virtual sitewalk and presentation to vendors, and the addendum two, which included our response to all of the 83 questions that we received throughout the process.
Can we look at it? See it?
Oh, yeah, let's see.
Does that work?
Thank you.
Here's hoping.
It works because Commissioner Landers jumped right on there and, and, and he's got it and he's excited.
Right there. Voila.
Great. She's got it on the screen. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, with that, Commissioner Tulcan?
Yeah, I have a question. Let's back up a little bit.
Commissioner Tulcan?
No.
Actually, can you move forward a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you.
It seems like our, on our agenda, it says the future of the airport property, Santa Monica Airport, the 227 acres. We've already seems to have predetermined where this is going. My concern is that you're hiring consultants that will come, will come back to you with what you're presenting to them. We should be considering all kinds of options. And it sounds like we're not.
Well, I think we, I think the nuance is, is, is in the fact that we are promoting the concept of a park on this land, and that we are not yet to the point where we've developed how that park is financed through the addition of additional uses, right? So I guess.
So it has been predetermined it's a park?
Well, to some degree, I think, yes. There is a notion that there will be some open space, to use Commissioner Landers's terminology, on this land. How big that open space is, is, has yet to be determined. What it looks like, where it's located, also undetermined. And ultimately, the result will be based on the economic feasibility. If we cannot afford to build it, it won't get built. If we can't afford to maintain it, it won't get built. I can say that with utmost assurance, assurance, especially in today's financial climate. Five years ago, I would have said, anything's impossible in Santa Monica. That's not the case anymore.
But you put out a request for qualifications.
We have?
You put it out to certain people. The people who you put it out to will determine in part what you're going to get back. In other words, if you put it out to Landscape Suzuki and Walker or somebody like that, you're going to get that kind of plan. Shouldn't we be looking at all kinds of use alternatives for that property?
Sure. Sure, absolutely. But I will mention that it's a very large property and it can likely entertain.
Yes.
Wide diversity of uses.
And we should consider amalgam of different uses.
I think we're saying the same thing, honestly, I do. I, I think in our minds, when you, especially when you see the, the image of the great park, it's just, it's over the entire parcel, that tends to stick. I think what we're really thinking is that park is, is an element in the process. It's the, it's the anchor, it's the anchor element, and it can be shifted and moved and shrunk and enlarged. What's really going to make it work is, are the things that support it. We know that we need open space, so you can just imagine that a parcel of this size, open space would be one of the many, many ingredients on the site. So I'm not, not, I don't think we're at odds, and all of this will come through the process. Key IDs, ideas will be elevated by the community, they'll be brought into the ideation phase, they'll be modeled to some degree so that we can visualize what it looks like. It'll be tested by the economists to say, you know, this, this is going to, this is a use that is likely to last for 300 years. It brings in this much revenue and it can support the thing that brings in zero revenue, which is a park.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Fresco?
Um, sorry, switch again. There. I just wanted to point out, I mean, Frank Gruber was correct that this was originally purchased by the city with a park bond, and it was a huge, I think it was like. And it was a huge, I think it was like $600,000 or something, which was enormous then. And at that time in the twenties, they could not pass a park bond for much less than that in order to buy the beach in Santa Monica.
Wow.
But they managed to buy this. And the reason is because what they meant by a park is not what you're talking about. They made money off of this park. Aviation was a recreational use. The other biggest portion of it, I can send you a map sometime if you want, is the golf course, you've seen that map. And then it's a shooting range and archery. And these are all things that they charged money for. So there's, I just want to kind of expand everybody's idea of what recreational uses and park uses are. And they don't all have to be money sucks. Some of them can actually generate money.
Or at least pay for themselves.
Or at least pay for themselves. And that's a way of thinking about it that just might help us.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, thank you. Yeah, they're not just money sucks, but they're not cash cows.
No, they're not. Well, in 1920s golf was a cash cow.
Yeah, you could shoot a rifle out of a park. I can see that generating some revenue, but not these days.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner, Vice Chair asking.
Thanks, just a few thoughts. I'm intrigued by the idea of Democratic Lottery. I share some of the concerns that other people have raised about it, particularly given the demographic makeup of our city. And I do think it's really important to ensure that marginalized voices are heard in this. I mean, I've been saying for a long time that it's been really problematic that for years, we've been a body of seven white voters trying to correct institutionalized racism in Santa Monica. And it sounds like this is an intriguing way of fixing that. But I think that we should perhaps seek out people to participate who have been historically marginalized and people who have perhaps very specific institutionalized knowledge about how people of color have been pushed out of Santa Monica. I think, you know, it's also important to involve people like Frank Ruber, who have very specific institutionalized knowledge about the last decade or so of the planning process for the airport. And then just a thought generally about working groups moving forward. You know, I've been to so many working groups and so many places that just devolve into a waste of time, where brainstorming is kind of sucked up by one or two people in the room. And I'm not saying that's not productive in maybe some way that I don't quite appreciate, but, you know, I think.
Very diplomatically stated.
No, but we should really think about how to facilitate those in a way that's productive.
Yeah, yeah. And maybe it's not, maybe the fun stuff isn't through the Democratic Lottery, right? Like, maybe that's, maybe it's this hybrid approach of running both, you know, the empaneled, empowered citizens panel as well as the, you know, community-wide events and board games that we do and like, you know, that James Rojas stuff that he does with all the garbage. You know, those are great ways to get great ideas.
Yeah. Just a few more quick points. I'm going to respectfully disagree with Commissioner Landers about the JPA idea. I think we should look towards how we can annex Atlanta, bring it into city control. I think that's going to be very challenging, very time-consuming and very expensive. But I think that it's going to be, it should be part of our long-term planning process. I mean, I think it's, to some extent, a little bit of an academic exercise, given, I'd please correct me if I'm wrong here, that, you know, city-owned land extraterritorially doesn't necessarily have to comply with City of L.A. zoning. But I, I don't know, that's at least my personal opinion on it.
You can.
Thank you. I actually wasn't proposing the JPA because of the land issue. I was proposing the JPA because I think that we will, particularly to the extent that we are making some choices around the balance of housing and open space, that we will hear more and more from our neighbors to the south. And I'd like to make sure they have a seat at the table because I'd like to make sure that we build something that doesn't lead the City of L.A. to swing its weight around and force us through state legislation into something we don't want to do. So, the idea behind a JPA is not to get site control, it's to get community buy-in and make them stakeholders in whatever vision we share and potentially through a JPA, maybe some, maybe even co-financers of what we want to do. Because under the terms of a JPA, maybe there's, maybe there are bond, you know, maybe there are financing opportunities from folks who can walk to the park from the south side, not just the north side.
Got it. Good points. Just two other real quick thoughts. I do think, and Commissioner Landers, you talked about this, I do think we should think boldly about how this fits into our long-term transportation infrastructure puzzle. I think perhaps we should think about how this might tie into a freeway closure that could happen three decades from now. I think we should think about how it might tie into other forms of regional transportation beyond just bike and roadway networks, like perhaps, I don't know, a streetcar. Ooh, a funicular, yeah. There you go. And then just last real quick thought. I really liked Commissioner Fresco's thought that we should think broadly about what could constitute recreational use. I mean, the theme park we got of the pier is such a fundamental part of the city identity. You know, I think that perhaps a counterweight to that on the other side of the city could be part of our long-term planning.
Interesting, yeah. Yeah, that helps visualize more of what Commissioner Fresco was talking about.
And I'll cut it off there.
Okay, well, first of all, I think you're heading in the right direction. I think this is a huge undertaking. I personally would love to see a park there. I think it's unrealistic though financially. And so I think we'll probably end up with some of those, one of those deals where we end up having to do some development on the site to pay for it. I'm not a financial expert, but is there a way that we could turn, we could put a lot of this land into a land conservation easement or something? Sell off some of the land, create an endowment that runs the conservation easement?
Possibly.
That way, maybe we can maximize the amount of land we can dedicate to open space uses.
Yeah.
I don't know, just kind of random thoughts I had. And I think that how you can, however you can expand the pot of thoughts you're getting from people, whether it's this Democratic Lottery or something similar, I really urge you to push on that. As I think we've heard on the dais tonight, we've tried these outreach processes before. We've tried to be as inclusive as possible. And we end up with the same 250 people who are upset or involved, sorry. And then we're happy that, you know, we got one public comment tonight. We will get more public comments when the shovels hit the ground and they say, who planned this? So, anyways, I think it's, you're heading in the right direction. And this is a fantastic opportunity for the city. And we really need to take our time. And I think the three years is too aggressive. And I think that we should take our time and find the right solution. Commissioner Landers?
Sorry. Two things that haven't been said. And I'm a little, actually, I'm going to criticize myself for not noticing this earlier. Where's the college and the school district in the conversation? I think they need to be for a variety of reasons. Some time ago, there was somebody who was, I don't know if he was serious or tongue-in-cheek, shopping around the idea of, you know, that the sites that currently are occupied by the college and the school district might not be the right sites 25, 50 years from now for those facilities. And this is a place where you have some opportunity to think about what those are. So I would encourage you to make sure that our, all of our partners are at the table for those kinds of conversations. So that, again, if you're, all the ideas that you're surfacing, you can surface, you know, potential ideas, particularly since the college is right there anyway. And then, and this, you know, sort of bleeds into the next issue, which is how do we visualize, going back to Commissioner Tolkien's point about needing to have, needing to see it. Let's have some, you know, competitions in our, some art competitions in our schools and get kids of different grade levels to literally draw out visions of the park with housing, the park with a new Ferris wheel or a new concert venue, the, you know, the shooting range. I don't really, you know, the archery range. But let's get our members of our community actively involved in creating visualizations that allow the, because this is so theoretical. And we look at plans and elevations and staff reports all the time. And so we can kind of envision what things might be. For this to be inclusive, those images and those options need to feel concrete and accessible. And they also need to feel authentic to our community, which means they need to come from our community.
Yep.
So, more design competitions, more public art challenges. It can be ephemera, but let's have more of it so that when something pops that we all fall in love with, people can say, I want that. And it will have been drawn by a fifth grader from, you know, one of our elementary schools. And people will fall in love with it and it'll be an amazing thing. And that kid will play in that park in 30 years.
Totally. Or it'll be like one of those James Rojas, you know, Coke bottle, curling plastic iron type of model that he makes. We did a bunch of those things.
And then we'll put up a monument to James as a Coke bottle and an iron, like.
Right. But listen, all that stuff is going to come. All that stuff is going to happen. It's just not going to happen for a while. Because we have to, and this is the part that's super frustrating, even for us that are, you know, rear-end to go. We're going to do a technical site investigation on the airport. It's going to take a year, a year and a half. So, I don't want to, you know, and what you find when you do that site investigation, you find that certain things can't be moved. And you want to know that before you unleash the Rojas and start doing design competitions. So, like, we have to temper this, you know, in a, at a pace that is acceptable to the process, but also, you know, respects the fact that there are certain steps that are going to come before others.
Somebody tweet that, unleash the Rojas.
It's coming. Yeah, I think Commissioner Fresco beat you to next in line.
He can go because I've said more things than him.
All right, I'm not going to disagree.
Just real quick, I do think it's really important to gauge the public's interest in developing housing at the site. And other legal constraints, I know that it might not be possible. But I think it's really important to ask the question specifically about housing. You know, I was talking to a stakeholder earlier today who said, perhaps facetiously, that, you know, if we don't take seriously this opportunity to build housing there, then our unhoused residents will just live in the park. So, you know, I think that, you know, notwithstanding the legal constraints, we've really got to ask that question.
I think it will come, right? Like, we're not going to ask it right now because we're just setting up the process. But I think it will come. If you have ideas for how you think we should entree to asking the question, we're all ears. But I think it will naturally come because, you know, there are definitely strong advocacy groups for housing. It's clearly an underutilized parcel. So, it'll happen.
Great, Commissioner Fresco?
Should have gone.
Oh yeah, I should have gone. Oh, I remember.
We'll be back.
I was thinking about, you know, what I was saying before about the Democratic Lottery and participation and that this is a long process and we want people to be engaged and indoctrinating children into thinking about the airport at a young age. So when they grow up, they'll join the process. And, so, but this is, you know, I'm joking, but I'm not really joking. You know, I think we have to, like, every three months, have like a regular, like, you know, press splits in the local papers about the airport and make people always thinking about it, have them follow it. Yeah, we're still doing that technical thing. Yeah, we bored 48 feet down and we didn't find any noxious cancer-causing terrible, you know, something like that. But the idea that it is a really long, drawn-out process, but it's happening in the public and people are kind of following it in the back of their minds, that might help us when we're ready to open it up to the public, to have them come in more.
Yeah, and maybe there's an opportunity for us to, you know, do more passive testing of ideas, like during the existing conditions. So to get to your point, Ellis, like, we could do, you know, digital surveys and we can have, you know, the question man in the newspaper, what do you think about the airport or this part of the airport? So, I mean, these are great ideas. It's going to be a big lift to keep that wheel turning for such a long time, but.
The outlook promoted the idea of a civic center beginning in 1910.
Wow.
I'm just saying. You know, this is like, this is how we do it here.
How we do it. Can I answer any other questions?
No.
I think you've exhausted us.
Great.
But we appreciate, we appreciate your time and it's great to see you back here.
Thank you.
Kind of reminds me of the loose.
Yeah, it has overtones of that.
Right.
It's nice to have you back.
Thank you. So we will look forward to having further conversations with you and the community on this and wish you Godspeeds with it.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Okay, Commissioners, back to our agenda. We go to item number nine. We have nothing on continued, nothing under 10, 11, 12, or 13. Planning Commissioner discussion items, I think, could just reiterate if we could get that livable communities agendized. And if Leslie doesn't get you the contact, I will send it to you as well. At that point, we're going to go to number 15. And I'm going to let Commissioner Tolkien adjourn this meeting in honor of his friend. You need to, I don't know, you need to come up though, so we can all hear you.
I'll learn. That Bonnie was a terrific woman. Very sweet people. She'd be sorely missed by her family and friends. And thank you all.
And we're now adjourned.